Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the time is five oh one P. M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Let me go over the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and shall interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping defeat, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to address the commission shall file a comment card, which shall include each agenda item, the person which is to address, as well as the person's full name, address, and the numbered agenda item. And if the comment card is not completed in entirety, the person will not be recognized. Thank you. Mr. Funn, are there any additions, leishens, reorganization of the agenda?
There are none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have a couple of proclamations, and we'll begin with item six point one. Emergencies can occur anytime, anywhere, and to any person. During what could be the worst day of our lives, we require police, fire, and emergency medical services promptly to protect life and the protection of property. In our city, the prompt response depends on the first critical contact with the West Palm Beach Communications Center and its telecommunicators. Telecommunicators process nearly two hundred and forty million emergency or nine-one-one calls from Americans annually, saving lives as a vital link between our residents and emergency services. So in appreciation of their compassion, understanding, and professionalism, I honor the City of West Palm Beach telecommunicators by recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Here to accept the proclamation is Suzette Dodd, telecommunications manager for the West Palm Beach Police Department.
Mayor, okay. Mayor James, commissioners, I wanted to say thank you on behalf of the dispatchers for continuing to recognize us every year. These nine-one-one dispatchers are really the voice behind, the calm voice behind the headset. They play an important role in public safety, and so we're always appreciative that you guys continue to recognize them, and I wanted to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
And excuse me, I just wanted to add that the shirt is because of, the theme for today was sports events, so the Steelers is my team.
And that's the best you could come up with? Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And very quickly, I want to reassure the commission and especially our citizens that the West Palm Beach Communications Bureau is best practice, thanks to them. Thank you.
Thank you again for all that you do. Now, we have another proclamation, and I am pleased on behalf of the city to proclaim April as Water Conservation Month once again. As we all know, water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and I was pleased to announce at my State of the City address that the city has sourced drinking water supply, drinking water, to supply our growing city and customers for the next fifty years. The City of West Palm Beach, the South Florida Water Management District, and the state of Florida have designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, as Florida's Water Conservation Month. During April, the City of West Palm Beach raises awareness about the importance of water conservation, reminding our residents how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. So I, Keith A. James, here, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. And here to accept this proclamation are Victor Carosi, Director of Public Utilities, and Elaine Christian, Sustainability Program Coordinator.
So, good evening. Thank you, Mayor James, City Commissioners, and our West Palm Beach community. I'm Victor Carosi, Director of Public Utilities, and on behalf of Public Utilities, I thank you for recognizing Water Conservation Month. Water Conservation Month has been recognized since nineteen ninety-eight with a mission to emphasize the importance of every day doing our part to preserve water supply for the future, both in small actions we can take at home and larger community-wide efforts. I want to recognize also the nearly three hundred and seventy-five staff members across our seventeen public utility divisions that are all part of providing safe drinking water and wastewater services to our residents, businesses, and visitors, and thank them for their services supporting our shared goal of providing safe, reliable utility services. In two thousand eight, this city established the Offices of Sustainability, now part of Public Utilities, through which various actions to encourage conservation of resources is central to their work. Tonight, I am joined by Ms. Elaine Christian, Sustainability Program Coordinator. The work of this office is not possible without the committed staff like Elaine, Department Supervisor Sarah Burke, and our other staff members who keep focused on ways to preserve, reduce, and protect our water resources. The Sustainability Office actively participates in many outreach events across the city. Water is a precious resource. Grassy Waters Preserve, a twenty-three-mile natural square, excuse me, a twenty-three-square-mile natural water catchment area, part of the original Everglades, is central to our drinking water supply. Due to its unique configuration, this area captures just rainwater, not runoff from roadways or drains, and with the grasses and other vegetation of this natural area creating a balanced ecosystem, serves as a significant source of the water, which we treat and then provide as drinking water to our customers. It is, however, limited in capacity and fully dependent on rainfall. As we look forward to the future, the city is engaged with an exciting new opportunity for water supply from the flurid and aquifer and advanced water treatment techniques such as reverse osmosis, so we can continue to provide drinking water to our customers, residents, businesses, and visitors, supporting a vibrant West Palm Beach community. And Elaine, would you like to say a few words about some of the ongoing efforts of our Sustainability Department? Thank you.
In celebration of Water Conservation Month, the City of West Palm Beach is partnering with the South Florida Water Management District to raise awareness about the importance of conserving water and to share practical tips that help residents and businesses reduce water use throughout the year. Outdoor water use accounts for nearly half of all residential consumption, making efficient landscaping and smart irrigation practices essential. To help residents conserve, the city's Office of Sustainability provides free fifty-five-gallon rain barrels to water customers year-round. Since two thousand sixteen, over one thousand three hundred rain barrels have been given away, with the potential of saving over seventy-one thousand gallons of rainwater during each rain event. When looking inside the home, bathrooms are typically the largest source of water use, with toilets leading the way. Older toilets can use up to six gallons per flush, while WaterSense certified models use just one point two eight gallons or less. To encourage water saving upgrades, the Office of Sustainability also offers one hundred and twenty-five-dollar water bill credits per toilet funded by the South, funded in part by the South Florida Water Management District for eligible water customers who make the switch. Since two thousand twelve, over five thousand toilets have been switched with the potential of saving over two hundred and forty million gallons of water. And for more information on our water conservation programs, you can visit WPP.org/savewater.
Thank you very much, Elaine, and again, on behalf of Public Utilities, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commission, for your attention to this matter, appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do. So now we'll turn to the consent calendar, items seven point one through seven point five. Commissioners, if you have any questions, comments on consent, items seven point one through seven point five. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of the consent calendar, second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point one, Resolution Number eighty-one dash twenty-five approves as face of the city a temporary exhibit in the urban living room of the Mandel Public Library of Treefall, a five-local artist art collective, and Resolution Number eighty-two dash twenty-five F appropriating thirty-five thousand dollars from the Art in Public Places reserves for future projects to facilitate the public exhibition of the Treefall Collective in the urban living room of the Mandel Public Library. Ms. Cantal.
Hello, Mayor Commissioners, give me a second because something is on this desktop that shouldn't be, and I can't get rid of it.
Meanwhile, can you introduce yourself, please, for the record?
Oh, sorry, St. Billy Cantal, Director of Arts and Culture and Community Building for the City of West Palm Beach. I'm sorry, there is something on the desktop and I just can't get rid of it.
Do you need I.T. to help you there, here?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yes, yes, please, sir, because I really, I don't know what this is. Oh, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, Art at the Urban, Treefall. So, Art at the Urban, the urban living room in the Mandel Library, for temporarily, for three months, we would like to exhibit five local women artists who collectively right now are in the Northwood neighborhood of West Palm Beach. They named themselves Treefall because it's the exploration of tree fall, the ecology behind it, and so use that as a metaphor of what happens when trees fall. They actually nurture the ground, you know, they make space, and evolution keeps happening. So the first artist is Molly Aubrey, and she works in sort of this idea of both the natural world and using a digital process to get imagery where she duplicates it over and over again, and she gets really close up into natural images and then sort of plays around with them digitally. You can see a little bit more, and so the idea is, and with hers, is to use one of her larger formats and then frame on top of it another artist's work, so there's a nice juxtaposition. Then Isabel Goveya, she's an interdisciplinary artist. She uses a lot of printmaking and installation in her work, but she considers her work taking the painting out of it and regenerating what she calls paintless technology, and she creates these massive landscapes. You can see one here, this is called Mind, and brings up environmental awareness, but you know, in a beautiful way. Here's another piece. These, the images, you know, it's hard to see the work with these images in this two-D format, but they're really gorgeous. The next artist is Natalie Ho, and originally from Taiwan, and she's now a West Palm Beach resident, and her work is really fun. She's actually working with cyber social evolution. She's taken this whole idea of how we are encoding, there was a time when emojis weren't a thing, and so she's using that and exploring how that in itself has become a visual language. And you can see how she's playing around with these ideas. Michelle Miller is another artist, she's also, she also draws, writes, makes books, sculpture, painting. She will be doing a couple of things. She wants to do a workshop where, she calls it Room for Dying, it's a project and experience and offering, as she calls it, where she makes, creates a safe space to talk about the transition that we have in our souls to move on to the next stage in our life, if you will. And then at the same time, she works with ecology, so she takes what is, like, she sources old shells, re, what, how does she do this? She breaks them down, cleans them, and then grinds them down back into their natural form. She uses that pearly pigmentation and reworks it into reprocessed paper and makes them into paintings. It's a handful, but they're gorgeous, they're very delicate, and when they're exhibited, they'll be behind Plexiglas. And then Eloise Jansen, she also is investigating what we do with our material culture and our consumption. So in this way, she becomes an archaeologist. She takes our discarded things that she finds on the beaches that were once of value, and she reframes them for us to look at. As you can see, she makes them both in printmaking and in sculpture. And so these five women artists to be exhibited temporarily at the urban for three months between September and November, and as always, I like to partner with the Mandel Public Library because they bring in that educational component. So each of these artists will do workshops that are for a broad public, not just adults or not just kids, but everyone, and this way, people get to understand more of how artists work and artist materials and how that exhibit translates into things that they could also make. And the exhibit, it would be funded through the city's percent for our program, and it aims, as always, to bring direct art experiences to the public.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions, comments, President Lambert?
Thank you, I was just struck by the beauty of it, and you know, most of the time we're talking about buildings and structures and variances and code, and it's just, it's great that we have such a strong program here in the city. And then I also noticed that you're calling it the urban. Is that something that we hope will catch on?
Well, it's called, currently it's called the urban living room, and it's just, that's a handful, and so when, by the time you say the City of West Palm Beach, Mandel Public Library, the urban, you know, it's like, you've done a whole essay, so the urban, I shortened it.
So you have unilaterally changed the name?
I'm just testing, sorry.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Verduzzi.
Just quickly, I just noticed on your presentation that you added an extra zero on there, it's not three point five million, it's thirty-five thousand, or three hundred and fifty thousand, it was thirty-five thousand. And are we, do we own these instantly, do we own this artwork afterward, or it goes back, so it's temporarily kind of on loan to us?
Correct, because they're not commissioned works, they're existing works, so, or, they're temporary.
Thank you.
Sharp eye, Commissioner Verduzzi, sharp eye. All right, any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number eighty-one dash two-five and Resolution eighty-two dash two-five F.
It's been moved as a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight point two, Resolution Number ninety-one dash twenty-five approving street tree maintenance agreement with the South End Neighborhood Association for the care and maintenance of trees to be installed along South Olive Avenue and granting face of the city approval for the tree installation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Sherri Wilson, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, all representing along with Andrew Burnett. If there's any questions at the end, our Park Operations Coordinator and City Arborist. Before you is Resolution Number ninety-one twenty-five for a face of the city approval for the planting of trees along South Olive Avenue and requesting to approval to enter into an agreement with the South End Neighborhood Association, also known as SINA, for the maintenance and care of the trees. So a little history of the project, the Office of Sustainability and the Planning Department started working with SINA back in two thousand twenty-two to address the neighborhood's concern regarding the loss of trees during the roadway improvements. The South Olive roadway improvements took place in two thousand eighteen and twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. The project removed trees as part of the roadway redesign and right-of-way irrigation. Since those improvements, the South End Neighborhood Association has been requesting trees be replanted to bring shade and tree canopy back along the roadway. A collaboration began with the Office of Sustainability, the Planning Department, Parks and Recreation, and SINA, discussing various options. Collaborating with neighborhoods to plant trees with a commitment from the neighborhoods to care for the trees results in higher success rates. The first collaboration was with the historic Elson Neighborhood, resulting in a ninety-five percent survival success rate with the trees and the palms. In two thousand twenty-two, the city started working with Kimley Horn Landscape Architects and the representatives of SINA to develop a tree replacement plan. This plan required alternatives for irrigation and ongoing care of the proposed trees. So the scope of the project, as you can see above, goes from Elmore Road to Gray Street, and then Gray Street to Gregory Road. In this slide, it's a little hard to see what's up here, but it shows the current location of trees in the bright green, the bright yellow, and the bright blue. These are the proposed new tree locations, of course, once the contractors get on site with our city team, there could be a slight shift in actual locations. In February two thousand twenty-five, the staff did a final walkthrough of the South Olive Avenue with Kimley Horn Landscape Architects establishing the locations and variety of trees. Selections of trees were agreed upon by SINA and the city. The cost is eighty-eight thousand nine dollars for the purchase and installation of the hundred and five trees. The funds to complete this project are budgeted in the Citywide Tree Program Fund. To ensure the success of this project, SINA agreed to enter into an agreement to care for and maintain the trees by signing a maintenance covenant. And some of the trees that we will be planting, these are pictures of current trees within the city, we're going to have live oaks, gumbo limbos, pigeon plums, silver buttonwoods, east palackahollies, and orange geigers. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution ninety-one twenty-five approving face of the city and the maintenance agreement with the South End Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Questions, Commissioner Ward and President Lambert?
Thank you, this is exciting, I know that this will be appreciated by the neighborhood and residents walking under these trees. I know in Northwood Hills, they entered into a maintenance agreement, but there was a period of time that we were, as a city, taking care of the trees just to make sure they root and grow and don't die. Is that going to be the same situation for this maintenance agreement?
Yes, so the same.
State your name for the record, please.
Sorry, Andrew Burnett. So yes, the same plan will be in place, it will be a three-month establishment watering period, and then SINA has expressed an interest to continue from there.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
President Lambert?
Thank you, I'm just very excited to see this move forward, I know it's been a long time coming, and a lot of work went in, and I want to thank staff, and I know Penny Redford, who's now retired, had a lot to do with this as well, and the residents came forward with a plan, and were very involved in this, and I just, I think that this is a great example of how throughout our city, we've partnered with our residents, so thank you so much, I'm excited to see this.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution Number ninety-one dash two-five.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine point one, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number fifty-one twenty-six dash twenty-five, a city-initiated text amendment to Chapter ninety-four, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article Three, Residential Districts, Section ninety-four dash eighty-five, special exception standards for historic residential districts, and Section ninety-four dash eighty-six, Historic Residential District Definitions, to modify the language, giving the Historic Preservation Board additional authority to grant special dimensional standard exemptions for contributing shotgun houses within the historic northwest neighborhood.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Chris Kimberly, Senior Urban Designer, this is second reading, there have been no changes from the first.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance number five-one-two-six dash two-five, amending Chapter ninety-four, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article Three, Residential Districts, Section ninety-four dash eighty-five, special exception standards for historic residential districts, and Section ninety-four dash eighty-six, Historic Residential District Definitions.
Thank you for that motion, is there a second? It's been moved in second, at discussion. Any cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hearing none, Madam Clark, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number five-one-two-six dash two-five, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter ninety-four, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article Three, Residential Districts, Section ninety-four dash eighty-five, special exception standards for historic residential districts, and Section ninety-four dash eighty-six, historic, I'm sorry, Historic Residential District Definitions, to modify the language to give the Historic Preservation Board the authority to grant additional special dimensional standard exemptions for shotgun houses on parcels containing multiple contributing historic structures within the historic northwest neighborhood, declaring these proposed zoning text amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Zoning and Land Development Regulation of the city, providing a confidence clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine point two, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Number fifty-one twenty-nine dash twenty-five, approving the conveyance of city-owned property located at eight fifteen Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard to the Sickle Cell Foundation of the Palm Beaches. Ms. Ferrell.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City.
Okay, before you begin, Ms. Ferrell, I'm sorry, Commissioner Warren has a disclaimer to make.
Thank you, as an employee of the Sickle Cell Foundation, I recuse myself from discussion and voting on item nine point two.
All right, thank you. You may begin, Ms. Ferrell.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners, members of the public, Jennifer Ferrell, Housing and Community Development Director. Before I start my presentation, I just want to point that if at any point I look uncomfortable up here, it's because I am, and if you see me glitching, it's not because anything has hit a nerve, but it's because literally my spine is hitting a nerve, so I just want to point that out, and I'm in a little bit of pain, but to move forward. So I just want to point that out, and I'm in a little bit of pain, but to move forward with my presentation, first and foremost, and in the full transparency and to uphold the integrity of this process, and as Commissioner Shalonda Warren just stated, I do want to publicly disclose a conflict of interest related to this matter. As you know, Commissioner Warren, who currently serves as our District Two Commissioner, is also the president and CEO of the Sickle Cell Foundation. And most of the property or the agreements and negotiations began way prior to Commissioner Warren's election or prior to her being elected as city commissioner in March of 2021. And while a lot of these items have progressed during her term, this entire transaction began way before she took office. I want to note that before negotiations commenced, both the city's ethic officer and deputy city attorney were notified in writing verbally, and we had various discussions regarding this conflict of interest. We established very clear protocols in terms of who we will be exclusively negotiating with, which was held specifically with the foundation's board chair, their co-chair, and their legal counsel. I want to make very clear that Commissioner Warren was not involved in any discussions or negotiations related to this matter, and that the office of the city attorney was present in every single negotiation to ensure full transparency and compliance. Again, the property that we're going to be discussing today is known as the Jenkins House, and it's specifically located at 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. It is adjacent to a city-owned parcel located at 811 Palm Beach Lakes, known as the Vickers House. The city acquired this particular property in 1966 via a tax deed. And via resolution 33923, the city commission did declare that this property was not needed for city purposes, and we declared the property as surplus. Before we proceed with the specific terms and conditions, I do want to give some historical context and some background, how we got to this point, and it's important for the members of the public and for this governing body just to really understand how we got to this process. I want to take it back to October of 1986, when the city entered into a 99-year lease with the Sickle Cell Foundation for a different property located at 1600 North Australian Avenue. And this lease was initially very strategic in the city's support of health equity by giving the Sickle Cell Foundation a very stable and a specific location to provide critical services to the community. Specifically, those services surround the sickle cell anemia, which we know is a condition that commonly affects the black community. The city was very strategic in ensuring that those services were directed in very specific census tracts throughout our neighborhood. And in our city, where wealth disparities, I'm sorry, where health disparities were very dispersed and very much pronounced. And with the 99-year lease term, it was evident that the city's intent was really to institutionalize the foundation's presidents in West Palm Beach. I want to state that in addition to supporting the foundation's mission, the city's lease also was very clear as it related to the maintenance responsibilities of the city. And I want to point out that the city was responsible for maintaining all major systems, including the roof, the foundation, structural framing, siding doors, windows, and performing any weather proving that was necessary to maintain the structural integrity of the building. In addition to that, the city for 99 years was also responsible for maintaining the landscaping, the walkways, the driveways, and we were responsible for ensuring trash removal, lighting, fencing, and all repairs needed for public safety. So I can't speak to, you know, over the several years or the 32 years prior to May of 2018, you know, how great of a job the city was doing as it related to its maintenance responsibilities. But I will tell you that the foundation in May of 2018, May of 2018, did alert the city that there were significant structural repairs that were needed in the building. At the same time, the city was looking for a larger space to occupy its community services division that was operating out of the Vickers House. And given the extent of the critical repairs that were needed, it really made most sense for us to demolish the existing building and to develop a new facility that would be occupied by both the city and the Sickle Cell Foundation. Both the city and the Sickle Cell Foundation agreed to move forward in that direction, and the Sickle Cell Foundation was temporarily relocated to 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. And this was used until the new facility at 1600 North Australian was constructed and ready for occupancy. I want to point out that in December of 2019, the structure at 1600 North Australian, which we all know now as the Eva W Mac Community Hub, that building was demolished, and we began the pre-development activities for the new building. In March of 2023, prior to the new construction being finalized, the city began lease negotiations with the Sickle Cell Foundation directly with their board president and their legal counsel before the new facility was developed. So how did we get here? So as we were negotiating with the Sickle Cell Foundation for the new space at the Eva Mac Building, it really became clear that it made sense for them to stay at the remaining, at the current building at 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard as we found that they would be better, in a better position to serve our community if they were to stay in that location. And also, it was a better location for them to really provide the services that they needed. They had dedicated standalone space outside of city operations. It was an increase in square footage to potentially support expanded programming. They had exclusive parking that they did not have to share with other city operations. They had a more central and visible location in the community. And given that the foundation had already been operating there for five years, it really established their strong local presence, and particularly in the Coleman Park neighborhood. I want to also say that, you know, allowing them to stay in the specific site also honored the intent of the 1986 long-term lease, which was aimed to provide a more permanent space. And we, you know, we also thought that conveyance rather than leasing really allowed the foundation to take ownership and stewardship of the property, and really relieving the city of those long-term operational and maintenance responsibilities that we had for extended periods of time. I'd like to also add that them having ownership of the building also puts them in a position to support or to leverage grant opportunities either for repairs of the building or for programming, as many of the times some of these grants require site control as a condition of applying for those grants. So with that said, the city staff, we did support conveyance of the property at the proposed restrictions. We would require a 10-year restriction in which the property must be used exclusively for the foundation's mission. We are requiring them to renovate the property. They will continue to do that for specific community use. We did agree to provide a $350,000 grant. I'll talk a little bit about that and, you know, the assumptions behind those figures. And we are also going to ensure that the property, because we do share a driveway with the Vickers House, that there's going to be a reciprocal access easement that will ensure that there is shared access via Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard and the rear alley and shared access for parking as well. To give some context as it relates to the $350,000 grant, I want to first point out that this structure, it is a historic structure. And if history serves us correctly, historic structures are expected to be significantly more expensive than any other type of rehabilitation work, specifically due to the specialized requirements that are needed for historic preservation. And so the city, we did send out a third party to review whatever items were essentially needed to cover health and safety repairs. And as such, our $350,000 would only support any roof or HVAC replacement, which is needed. Any structural leveling, there are some issues on the second floor in which the property does need some leveling. Upgrades to ADA bathrooms to ensure ADA compliance. There is a rear stairs that really needs some rebuilding because it's not stable. There are some front and side door replacements, and then some siding repairs that are also needed. The foundation will be responsible for covering all other improvements outside of the city's scope and for any potential cost overruns or any change orders under the city's scope. Again, as I previously stated, this is a historic preservation project, and these repairs are pretty much, are very much necessary to bring the property up to basic health and safety standards. I want to also add that irrespective of whether this property is conveyed or not, the city will have to make these repairs to the building. I will tell you, we have not done the best job at maintaining some of our properties, and these repairs are very much needed whether this transaction moves forward or not. With that being said, staff respectfully recommends the city commission to authorize and approve the conveyance of property located at 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard to the Sickle Cell Foundation under the proposed and outlined terms that have just presented. I want to remind you that conveyance of any city agreement must be approved by ordinance, which requires two readings, one of which must be approved by supermajority vote of the city commission. The second reading has been scheduled for May 12, 2025, not the upcoming city commission meeting, but the following. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ferial. Any questions? Commissioner Paduzzi.
Just a quick question. I know that you outlined the whole scope of work that needs to be done, and if there's anything outside of the scope of this work, Sickle Cell will have to be responsible for themselves. Is our contribution, the grant of $350,000 capped? Or is there some open end that if those repairs, those things within that scope are more expensive, that we'll be left with having to cover that?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. We're very much capped at 350, and we have very specific language to say that we have no further responsibilities outside of that $350,000 irrespective to what the costs are.
Yes, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, and I'm sorry your back is hurt. Let me know if you want a good doctor. I'm curious, so obviously there's the 10-year restriction. Say, you know, they find a cure for Sickle Cell, something happens and they want to change their mission, or they want to wind down and find another, not for, what, just maybe this is a legal question, but what happens in that event?
Our agreement, and great question, Commissioner, our agreement as it stands and as it has been negotiated only caps us at, you know, they have to remain within their mission for 10 years. After that, they have the ability to provide services or go in a different direction if necessary.
Follow up.
So can they amend the mission of the organization to comply with a changed mission five years down the road?
It has to maintain for the specific purposes. It cannot be amended during that 10-year period. But after the fact, if they go in a different direction, we have no obligation. But of course, if.
We may have someone from legal to weigh in on that.
Nancy, your deputy city attorney. In the event something like that occurred, they would need to get the commission's approval to make any changes. So if a miracle happened and they cured Sickle Cell and the foundation was no longer needed, they'd have to come back. They're required to just use it and stay there, but if for some reason it becomes an impossibility or not, they would still need our permission to release them from those covenants.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, President Lambert.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate the slide and the discussion in the beginning, talking about the transparency and ethics. I think that that was really important to have that conversation, and I feel comfortable with that. And that, given what you described as needing as far as upkeep and repairs of the, for us to maintain the original lease as well as what would be needed on this property, this seems like a good negotiation. So thank you for bringing that to us. I guess my question follows along with what Commissioner Paduzzi was asking about. Have they done an inspection and they feel comfortable with the amount of repairs and work that needs to be done that the organization can move forward and be successful?
Thank you for your question, President Lambert. And yes, both the city and the foundation, we had our own independent individuals. Our contractors go out and look at the, provide a scope of work. We compared it. We looked at what exactly the city was willing to pay for, which we limited very specific to health and safety. They have other repairs that they'd like to do that fall outside of what we were willing to support. But we both had our independent inspections, and we both felt comfortable with that $350,000 grant.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We have any cards on this one?
Yeah.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of ordinance number 5129-25, a first reading, and schedule a second reading for May 12, 2025.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, it's an ordinance. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Madam Clark, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5129-25, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 815 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard to the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County Incorporated, authorizing execution of a conveyance agreement and all ancillary documents, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries. Please note that Commissioner Warren abstained.
Thank you.
All right. Item 9.3, public hearing of resolution number 73-25, approving substantial amendments to the city's annual one-year action plans for the Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal years 2023, 2024, and 2024 to 2025, and the Home Investment Partnerships Program for fiscal years 2020 to 2021, 2021 to 2022, 2022 to 2023, and 2023 to 2024, authorizing submission of the substantial amendment to the plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the mayor to execute all agreements and documents for submission of the amendment and use of the funds. And resolution number 95-25F, amending the CDBG and home program grants and general fund budgets to reprogram funding to specific projects and provide for appropriations of prior year program income and anticipated CDBG program income.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development. I'd like to start off by giving some background on the proposed substantial amendment. As you know, the city is a recipient of entitlement funds from HUD under the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Grant, and also the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program. This substantial amendment will impact the CDBG and the home programs. These funds have to be used for eligible activities, and those activities have to primarily benefit low and moderate income persons within the city of West Palm Beach. In order to receive the funding, the city is required to prepare a five-year consolidated plan and subsequent annual action plans that specify the use of the federal funds, specifically the budget for those funds and also the accomplishments for the program year. Those plans are approved by HUD annually, and if amendments are made to the plans, the amendments have to be transmitted to HUD. There are certain criteria that determine when an amendment is needed to a consolidated plan or annual action plan. Specifically, if one of three decisions are made, it will require an amendment to the approved plan. Specifically, if there's a change in the allocation priorities or a change in the method of distribution of funds, if the city is proposing to carrying out an activity using funds from one of the programs that are covered by the plan that is not previously described in the action plan, including any program income. And program income is local funds that are generated from the use of the federal funds. Also, if there's a change in the purpose, scope, location, or beneficiaries of an activity, we are required to amend the plan. There are two types of amendments to a con plan or a annual action plan, a substantial amendment or a minor amendment. Again, we have to, for substantial amendment, which is what we're proposing today, there are certain factors that would trigger that process. Specifically, if there's a measurable objective for an activity and it's revised by 100% or more. So essentially, if we're deleting an activity from an annual action plan, the addition or deletion of one of the priority needs that's listed in the consolidated plan, or any change in the use of funds from one eligible activity to another that result in a decrease, increase or decrease in a budget line item of more than 35%. And finally, if there's an introduction of a new activity that was not previously listed in an annual action plan. So specifically for the CDBG program, we are essentially doing a budget transfer. We are reallocating CDBG funds from public services and planning and administration in the 2023 action plan to fund eligible public facilities and improvement projects. So these are projects that are located in primarily residential areas. They also have a high percentage of low and moderate income persons, over 51% low mod income. We also are introducing in our 2024 action plan anticipated program income. So again, this is not program income that has been generated at this point, but an estimate of the program income that we anticipate receiving during the year based on previous year's program income generated. And again, because this is anticipated funding, we do not know at this point how those funds will be used, but they will be used for activities that are already identified. will be used, but they will be used for activities that are already identified in the action plan. The total amendment for the CDBG program, as you can see here, is $396,560. And under the home program, this substantial amendment is primarily to introduce program income that the city has earned over a few years, so this includes funding from 2020 to 2023. The funding for the home program will be used for new construction and housing development of multifamily rental housing for low-income persons. And in addition to the program income, we are also moving some funding from a home buyer assistance activity that was funded in the 2021 action plan also to the same activity, new construction and housing development. The total revised budget for the home program is $361,711. Because this is a substantial amendment, federal requirements, federal regulations require us to have a 30-day public comment period. We did publish a notice in the Palm Beach Post on March 14th. The 30-day comment period ends this evening. We are required to consider any comments in preparation of the final amendment, and we will include a summary of any comments regarding the substantial amendment in our submission to HUD. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those now, and we do recommend approval of resolutions 7325 and resolution 9525F. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions, comments, Commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 73-25 and resolution number 95-25F.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
We move the second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioners, we'll now move to the quasi-judicial portion of the meeting, and I'll need you to make your disclosures, please. And we'll start with Commissioner Peduzzi, looks like he's ready.
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with a representative of the applicant or representatives of the applicant. I have not received written communication, I have not conducted an investigation, I've not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I need to amend that, I believe I have received written communications from members of the public. I have not made a site visit, I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. President Lambert?
Thank you. As to this item, I have had ex parte communications with representatives of the applicant, I have received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren?
As to item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with representatives of the applicant and the applicant. I have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren?
Mayor, as to item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with the applicant and applicant's representative. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
And in the unlikely event that I have to vote, I will make my disclosures. As to item 10.1, I have had ex parte communications with representatives of the applicant. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. All right. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on item 10.1, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.1, public hearing of resolution number 74-25, regarding a major amendment to the Palm Beach Atlantic University Community Service Plan Development to increase the maximum student enrollment cap, amend the master plan to increase building height north of Acacia Road, and to provide for the construction of a 25-story dormitory building and 11-level parking garage structure. Ms. Brinkman?
Good evening. For the record, Joanie Brinkman with Urban Design Studio on behalf of the applicant, Palm Beach Atlantic University. Before I begin my presentation, I did want the commission to know that we do have our entire team here, including our project architect and our project traffic engineer. And at the end of the presentation, should there be project discipline-specific questions you have, I can call them up to address your issues and concerns. Before I start the technical presentation, though, I would like to invite up Dr. Schwinn, the president of Palm Beach Atlantic University, to do some, to provide some brief comments. And then following her, Kirk Brown, the Assistant Vice President of Construction and Design, and then I'll start my technical presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to share some brief remarks about Palm Beach Atlantic University to provide us an overview for you tonight. PBA is a vital part of our community here in West Palm Beach and within the region of South Florida. The enhancements that we propose tonight are guided by a strategic plan and a comprehensive master plan, both aligning with our motto, "To equip students to grow in wisdom, lead with conviction, and serve God boldly." Our mission is also reflected in longstanding tradition of worship. This is the distinctive community service program that responds to human needs with Christ-like action in the community and the world. Through this community service, PBA students have contributed more than four million hours of community service since 1968, benefiting both local communities and fostering servant leadership. PBA is focused on preparing graduates for high-demand fields such as nursing, pharmacy, physician assistant programs, teaching, and business as examples. We look forward to collaborating with institutions like the Cleveland Clinic and NYU Langone, and leveraging the growth of Wall Street South to ensure that our students are well-prepared to contribute to both our community and also beyond the community. We recognize the need to enhance our campus, to support our strategic direction, and to accommodate even our current students. Complementing this effort is our master plan designed by Foster and Partners of London, which envisions a more residential, walkable, and less car-dependent campus. This vision aims to create a vibrant pedestrian-friendly environment in the heart of West Palm Beach, which would benefit both PBA but also our surrounding community. We're excited about the opportunity to partner with Vanderbilt, which will open new doors for collaboration, innovation, and academic excellence. Thank you for your continued support of Palm Beach Atlantic University, as we take steps needed to ensure that our university grows alongside the city of West Palm Beach. Thank you.
Kirk Brown with Palm Beach Atlantic. Again, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and your staff for the time they put into this presentation today. I just wanted to bring up a couple items about the project so that as we discuss and we can put some frame around some of the positives that this project brings to PBA and the community. We're in front of you with three kind of ideas, right? One is that we build a residence hall to enhance our student experience. There's current students that have been on our campus for years, and this is a way to enhance that experience. It's also a way to provide additional dining, fitness, and student commons, so this project is really a multi-use within the student body. It also is a way to bring commuters back on campus. We currently have over 1,200 commuters that call PBA home, and this residence hall will allow us to bring those commuters back on campus. And one of the things that we know is students that live on campus have a better retention rate, and they also have quicker graduation rates. And I can tell you that's true, because every time I called, my dad asked to move off campus at Palm Beach Atlantic when I graduated in 1992, he said no, and I thought it was just him being mean, but in reality, I graduated early and I stayed out of trouble. So bringing these students back on campus would be a great solution to bringing students to a great graduation rate and keeping them as a retention percentage. Our parking needs and our parking garage today is going to be a big part of that discussion. We want to be self-reliant. Right now, we are reliant on all of our partners in the area, and in some cases, neighborhoods in our area. So we want to move from being reliant on other partners providing parking for the university and bring it back on our responsibility. This helps to reduce trips. Our commuters come in and out of our campus multiple times a day, and by moving them to a residential student, this will reduce trips. The residential trip is less, and they also, if they do travel, it's mostly off peaks to jobs and additional internships and other things that these programs that Dr. Schwinn has shared allows them to stay on campus and also provide transportation to their employment. And the last thing that we have in front of you that I think is important to mention is we are requesting a 3,000 to 5,000 student cap to be raised from 3,000 to 5,000. And one of the things that really comes to mind is, that's part of our strategic growth plan. It's not an overnight plan. This is a 10, 15, possibly 20-year plan, depending on all the circumstances that go with, you know, applications and all the things that really go into picking a university. So this is not an overnight plan. So we're in front of you with a project that handles our today's needs, our students for today, our parking needs for today, but as we grow, we'll be in front of you again to address these future growth needs. Also, when we do fill this out to 5,000, 1,000 of those will be graduate students, right? So our goals are both undergrad and grad growth, and this will help us prepare for the things that Dr. Schwinn said we do. We provide graduates to your nursing, to your PA programs. These are the programs that are expanding at a great rate, and we just believe that PBA will be able to provide those and meet our strategic growth as long as, and within our master plan. So thank you for letting me share this, I just wanted to frame some of that before we get into the technical stuff. Thanks again.
Thank you. If I can see without my glasses. Okay, Dr. Schwinn already spoke about PBAU. Interestingly enough, it was founded here in 1968, which is about 50 years ago, actually over 50 years ago, and it took about that long to get up to close to 3,000 students. So when Kirk mentioned that it may take 20 years, it may take 20 years, but we're located, as you know, downtown, we're a not-for-profit university. Our campus is about 19 acres in the downtown area with our campus, our RAC facility, Rinker Athletic Campus on Parker, which is 76 acres in size. We have satellite campuses in Orlando and online programs. PBAU students, as mentioned, they have contributed over four million hours of service since the inception of the university in this area. I'll go through this fairly quickly as well, because Dr. Schwinn covered it, regarding our undergraduate programs. We have graduate programs, PhD program. The, interestingly enough, too, we also have over 90 performances in the year, which attract a lot of the residents to campus. The blue here shows our current land area under control of the master plan, which starts at Okeechobee Boulevard and goes south. Once you go past the north end on the northeast, it's bounded by Dixie Highway to the west and by Olive to the east, with Jefferson being the southern boundary. In regards to where we're talking about, the site, subject of today's application, is the parcel that is on the east side of Dixie. It's bounded by Gruber to the north, Acacia to the south, and Wallingford to the east. You'll recall that just to the northeast of the square is where the current business school is under construction, and Gruber up in that area had previously been abandoned and incorporated into that site plan. This master plan just shows you the land area. Again, to the west is the cemetery, and other than the cemetery, this parcel is surrounded by the university itself. In regards to the site plan, so the university did not take this lightly as far as to how to lay this property out. The parking garage is proposed to be on Dixie Highway. That allows best practices to be utilized from a university standpoint where you get the students who are commuting in a garage perimeter to the edge of the property. So you don't have students walking past garages internal to the property. The parking garage is proposed to be 11 stories in height. We listened to both of the pre-agenda meetings, we understood you wanted a proposal. We can speak later on options, but at this point in time, as I said, the university didn't take it lightly, and we feel we need all this parking to support not only our current students, faculty, and commuters, but for the future as well. To the east is the residential dormitory portion, which is to be 300 feet in height. It's 25 stories, there's 275 rooms, which accommodate 990 students that'll be brought on campus here. Access to the parking garage is to the, from the north and the south off Gruber and Acacia. There is a service alley in between, which actually will function, we were discussing today very well during move-in and move-out as well, to keep traffic off of the surrounding roadways. And to the east, that green area is part of the Foster and Partners master plan and the open space connectivity throughout the university that Dr. Schwinn mentioned. I'll touch on that later. This is a little bit busy of a plan, it's not as pretty as the color one, so I think I pretty much went over everything in regards to the access to the parking garage. The access to the dormitory is to the northeast, and you'll see that later in some renderings. And this is the Foster and Partners plan that was being referred to. You'll see where the quad or the green space connector going north and south is situated right now between the library and Baxter Hall. It continues down south, the green complex being to the west, and to the east is the new business school, and it will continue down south and ideally someday go across Acacia and down to the Performance Center. That is why the dormitory was situated in this location. It provides the first portion of hopefully a future greenway connection and open space area for the students, and not only the students, but apparently from what I understand, a lot of the residents utilize that green space as well, they walk their dogs, it's a nice area. So that is one of the reasons why the dorm was placed in this area. In regards to the technical request, we are requesting the approval for a 25-story dormitory building for 990 students, an 11-story parking garage, which is proposed to be 127 feet in height with 888 parking spaces. We also included in that fitness space on the ground floor facing Dixie Highway. When we met with staff in June, we did not originally have any active space in that garage frontage. They suggested it, we thought it was a great idea, since then we have added it along with some support space. They also suggested we reach out to FDOT to see about planting more landscape in the FDOT right-of-way along Dixie Highway, which we have done and incorporated into our plans as well to create that more urban environment. These active uses will be visible from the street to correct, to create that environment envisioned by staff and by the city. Again, we are requesting to increase the student enrollment from 3,000 to 5,000. We've been capped at 3,000 for many, many years through the concurrency process at Palm Beach County Traffic Division. They have reviewed our traffic report in regards to the increase and approved it, and your staff has reviewed our traffic report as well. And then we are also looking to gain approval for four waivers from development regulations, which I'll go over. We have received some support letters, and I can actually, for the clerk, I can leave some additional ones. These were the Hive and the Norton. Since then, we have received a letter of support from Family Church, from Memorial Presbyterian, and from the Frisbee Group as well, so I'll leave these with the clerk to enter into the In regards to benefits to the city and the community associated with this request, again, the additional on- the additional on-campus housing will allow for a reduction to the amount of current commuter students coming during peak hours to the campus and the overall area. In addition, it will also open up additional housing options within the city. Many of the students who live off-campus live in the renting condominiums, they're renting the accessory dwelling units in residential neighborhoods. Those would then be available for other, hopefully reasonably priced workforce housing-type units for other people with, to live closer to downtown. The 888 parking spaces will provide for additional parking options of on-campus students and negate the requirement for off-site agreements with other property owners in the area, as well as reduce peak hour trips. We have historically, for as long as I can remember, actually been utilizing off-site parking agreements and the city created conditions of approval, I think it was close to maybe in 2015, where we submit an annual parking report and our parking consultant creates a demand and a supply and he can speak later to the fact that this request actually is supported by that report. And finally, with West Palm Beach becoming a destination for world-class educational opportunities, this will allow for the continued elevation of the status of the university while continuing to provide community-based benefits. That also bodes well for both the prior speakers speaking to healthcare education and with Cleveland Clinic coming, I think it's, the whole area will benefit from our educational opportunities here. I'll go into the nitty-gritty now of the waiver requests. I'll try to go through them fairly quickly. We are asking for a waiver to the maximum building height. Right now and for many years, the overall master plan allowed for a maximum height of 125 feet all across the campus. We are now asking for a 300 feet only in the area north of Acacia. That is to protect any perceived impacts to residential to the south. We have support from staff on that. We also have to ask for separation of access points for corner clearance. That's to the entrances, to the garage entrance on Gruber Place from the Dixie Highway intersection. We have support for that. We also have to ask for distance between access points waivers. That's because of the service alley that is being proposed between the buildings. Had that alley not been there, we really wouldn't have to have asked for it. But staff said by code, we need to request this, but we're there in support of it because that's, that service alley will be signed for service and deliveries only. We're also required to do extra crosswalk treatment across the sidewalks at the entrances to both those, so the use of that alley is very, very minimal. And finally, site visibility triangle setbacks. The code in West Palm Beach, the suburban code, requires the 20-foot triangles at intersections. However, we support, we provided evidence and compliance with the FDOT standards, which are more utilized in more urban environments such as downtown. We did get your traffic engineer reviewed it as well as your professional staff and we have support for that waiver as well. I'll fly through these as quickly as I can. The waiver request for the height, it's being supported because of the other height proposed, existing and proposed in the area. Heights of Flagler Tower, Forte, and South Flagler are all over 300 feet. The Bristol and the Clara are close to it. The waiver is also consistent with the Okeechobee Corridor directly north of the campus in regards to heights. While we're not in the downtown, the general public wouldn't necessarily know that when you're driving into West Palm Beach. Mr. Sees Hotel is currently approved at 308 feet. West Palm Point, One Flagler, and the Plaza all over 300 feet in height and Esperante is 283, which results in the staff's recommendation of approval. This is just an illustrative aerial that shows you what I just spoke of and the heights in the area, as well as the proposed greenway throughout the campus. This, I'm sorry. This context graphic was prepared by a project architect, also showing that we are not out of scale with the other buildings in this surrounding area. Based on compatibility and existing projects in the area, staff is recommending that, applicable only for the height increase north of Acacia. The corner clearance separations, I might just go right to the graphic because this is a lot of words. This shows you more clear where, I don't know if I can show you that. Yeah, okay. So we have a separate, the separation from Dixie to the Gruber entrance here at 64 feet instead of 75, again, supported. We did not need to ask for that down here, but we needed to ask for the separation from this driveway entrance into the garage and the service alley and this driveway entrance into the garage and the service alley. Again, all being supported by staff, as well as this slight encroachment into the 20-foot corner here and here at the intersections. And then this shows the FDOT design manual requirements and we are in compliance with those, such that staff is also recommending approval. Shows you the distances. Parking, okay, as I mentioned before, we have been conditioned to provide annual parking studies. We currently had an adequate public parking supply in the 2024 report by utilizing off-site parking agreements. PBAU has taken many steps and can continue to take steps operationally to reduce the parking demand on campus. They do not issue permits for freshman residents and they also can utilize a pricing structure to manage and incentivize parking behaviors. I know that, for instance, they have the shuttle off-site to the RAC and they give their faculty a discount to utilize that rather than parking on campus. But the proposed parking structure provides for additional supply in excess of the parking demand generated by the residential building and therefore some of that excess can also be used for commuter students in the parking garage as well as faculty. We just wanted to pull up this slide to give you an idea of some of our off-site agreements and some of the parking spaces that we've lost and could lose. So First Church of Christ, Flagler Towers, and the tent site were all previous agreements we no longer have. The green complex, we lost some spaces there with the construction of the business school. We're losing some spaces on the lot right now for the construction of the dormitory, which of course will be made up with the parking garage. We currently have agreements with both Family Church, which is our largest off-site, and Holy Trinity, which are a year-to-year basis and I understand that there's been a lot of interest in Holy Trinity recently as well for redevelopment. So that's what's been happening is some of our off-site spaces are actually being eliminated because of this success of West Palm Beach and the redevelopment that's taking place here. I just wanted to point out that that totals 802 spaces. And again, we have worked with staff throughout this entire process. I just wanted to walk you through some of the changes we'd made since we first met with them in June and there are multiple resubmittals. This is the last application we submitted, which did provide a facade treatment on the garage. But this is the one we submitted in July and you'll see the parking structure actually did not have a treatment on it. We responded with a subsequent submittal proposing treatment that was initially accepted and supported by staff. Oh, sorry. The original tower, we heard at the planning board, they were not in favor of the color scheme. They thought it was too dark. So we have now proposed a lighter palette, more blending into the colors on campus already. And then we have a couple of design facade alternatives, which I know we'll get into that discussion later, but I did want to state that the university is still very much willing to work with staff and the commission on design, but feel strongly that based on our needs, we do need the 11-story parking garage. So this is one alternative and Chris Santoro from Cube Three is here if you have specific architectural questions. This one provides more of a curved metal treatment, which when I go to the next one, you can see that on the perspective of South Dixie. Shows you the additional landscape we're going to be able to provide in the right-of-way, the active use with the students and the fitness activities there right on the campus, Dixie Highway, on-street parking as well. So we think that's really creating the type of environment that we all want to see there on South Dixie. This shows you, why is this doing that? This depicts, this is looking north from Acacia and on the east side of the dormitory building. And you'll see the two lower levels of dining and then additional fitness on the next level. But this facilitates our ultimate goal of creating that greenway throughout campus. Eventually, you know, hopefully one day we'll incorporate Wallingford as well and we'll create that connectivity that Foster and Partners envisioned for urban campus. This is a revised rendering that, this is from Wallingford, looking at the main entrance at the northeast corner of the dormitory building, showing some outdoor seating as well, stair seating for the students, the use of the outdoor greenway area and the access to the building. You'll see a lot of bicycles. I think we had almost 200 bicycle spaces in the garage. And this is the revised tower looking west with the color palette more soft. And this is the aerial with the 11-story, this is the 11-story garage, which is what we are requesting here tonight with 888 spaces at a height of 127 feet. And the architects taken efforts to make it blend into the tower behind it and it, again, to the west of the garage, there is really no residential that will be impacted at all. We surround the entire affected area. The planning board did have two comments. One, to switch to a lighter paint color, which we have done. The second was recommended to provide landscape on the top deck of the garage. We really didn't want to do that due to construction and maintenance costs that seem to happen when you do that, but we have worked with staff and we are in agreement with providing a mural on the top of the garage similar like to what we did on the courthouse. And we are in agreement with all the staff conditions of approval. They have looked at the standards. They have determined we are in compliance with it. They're supporting our request. There is one condition, it's condition 15, where there was, I think, a Scrivener's error. That was for, I think, the parking study and it had a date of August 1st, 2026 to terminate and it should have been August 1st, 2025 and I think Linda will speak to that verbally in her report. In closing, the university's been a longtime member and contributor to the West Palm Beach community. We're poised for growth with the, with the business coming to the city. We appreciate consideration given to this proposal and look forward to becoming, being a significant positive presence for decades to come. So I know there's going to be questions. I don't know if you want to have staff's report first or go to questions?
Well, I do want to address one thing because I'm a little bit confused. You're saying that staff has approved the 11-story garage?
There was, there was no...
They're recommending?
They're recommending approval, yes.
Staff, let me hear from you on that because I've gotten contrary information on that
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Linda Louis, Principal Planner for the Record. Yes, so staff has recommended approval of the 11-story parking garage. We've reviewed it in context with the amendment standards of 9432 regarding our concerns or your concerns at agenda review regarding the height and our discussion with the applicant, you know, and them suggesting that they would be amenable to the height reduction as presented at agenda review. Staff does not have any objection with that. So even though it is compatible with the surrounding context in Dixie with the 11-story height as currently presented, lowering the height as presented at agenda review would be even more compatible with the surrounding context of the area. So yes, staff did recommend approval of the current height, but would not object to the concerns with the height and lowering it.
All right, so staff is recommending the 11, is...
Yes, we have recommended approval.
Has?
With the condition, yes.
You still currently recommending?
We do, yes.
All right. Okay, let's go through, is there any questions for the applicant and then we'll hear staff's report. I just need to get clarification on that particular point. Commissioner Ward?
It's just for, yes, yeah. I appreciate the change in the color palette. I know we discussed that when we met and I, your campus is beautiful. It has a historic nature. I know that you guys aren't private developers and it's costly to make something look as beautiful as what we used to do back in the day, apparently, but I do appreciate that very much. And just a question because it wasn't really clear on what you guys are actually proposing to cover with. I know we discussed it and I know it's very pricey to cover it with the metal, but I just wanted to really understand, what are you exactly proposing as far as the coverage?
Yeah.
Or what do you have budgeted and?
Chris Santoro? Yep. Let me go back to the two options, which actually, this is the option where you can see where it shows, I don't know why it's doing that, the way, that's not it. The waves of the mesh metal, but I'll let our project architect speak to it. This was one, which is that one, and this was more of a window-type look.
I thought you showed one that was also abstract shapes and earlier in your presentation.
Oh.
I just didn't, so that was like three?
The original one.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you mean? That one.
That, yeah. So is that not, that's not in the...
It would still be an option. We were under the impression that it wasn't well, as well received.
Okay. That was my question, is I, which, we haven't decided that or when do we make that decision or when, is that part of our decision-making?
No, we don't design buildings.
Okay. Pardon?
No, I was just mumbling. Go ahead, continue talking.
Actually, that's a very good question because I know you have to approve something tonight. So if there is not one that you're absolutely comfortable with, what we would be willing to do is accept a condition that we would have to come back to you later to show other options after we have submitted and got input from staff on how they feel about them and move forward with a different option for you to approve. But at some point, there's going to be multiple options. We could create as many as, you know, but somebody has to make a decision. So we can always come back if you don't want to make that today. That won't impact our schedule because the most critical component right now is to get the dormitory out of the ground. So if we can move forward, get the dormitory approved, move forward with permitting, we could always continue to massage the facade.
Did you have follow-up?
All right, no, thank you.
All right, let me say something and then I know that other commissioners have some things to talk about. And let me preface this by saying, this is by no means any adverse reflection on the role of the university in our city. They have been tremendous corporate citizens. They mentioned a number of hours of workmanship that they've done. Very fine corporate citizen. And I was hoping to hear tonight about some improvements, design improvements to this garage, which would make me more comfortable about its appearance on Dixie Highway, which is a major quarter in our urban core. I've not seen anything. So I am, and I've stated this publicly, I cannot, I'm not in favor. I mean, I'm only, I may, I may not have any votes, but you know, I may have a vote. Of a 11-story garage, the full length of this property on Dixie Highway, I've not seen anything tonight, which softens my position. It is a monstrosity. It is a monstrosity. It is not appealing. We are, have been moving more toward a pedestrian-friendly urban core. So, a couple of things. You did mention that the university, I guess, has a policy that no freshman could have cars on campus. My question is, particularly in light of the fact that you've had issues with parking. You've highlighted those. Many of the surface parking opportunities you had are no longer available. So, I guess a question is, why hasn't the university been more proactive about restricting parking for its students? I went to an urban campus in Cambridge, Massachusetts. We could not have cars. They, and so, I know there are universities, very fine universities, that restrict its students from having cars. So, let me ask that question. Has the university taken or considered more proactive, more stringent policies for having cars on campus thereby reducing the need for students to have parking spaces?
They have continually reassessed their parking every year and made adjustments. One of the things that was brought to my attention was that while freshmen are not allowed cars, that it was surprising the amount, they give, have a high scholarship rate as well Pell Grants. And it's surprising how many students, while the cars may be parked there during the day, at night or on the weekends, they have jobs. And they're actually fulfilling jobs in the local community that need to be filled. So, that is one of the reasons I believe that they have not done across the board. I don't know if Kurt wants to speak to that. But, but there are reasons why some of the students do need cars. But if they're working at night and the weekends, those cars aren't coming in and out during peak hour times. They're sitting there during the day and then leaving the campus and coming back when it's not peak hour. And Chris can probably speak to that, too.
But those cars can be parked at RAC, correct?
So, we do, Mayor, thank you for that question. We, we have actively been working towards a more, or less car-dependent, absolutely. We've increased things like bike racks. If a student comes to the university and knows they can ride a bike over to the beach, right? Those are the things that out-of-state students wonder what they can do. We're educating those from the beginning. So, a little switch that we have in our university, we used to be heavy local students, not even just Florida, Palm Beach County, right? And over the years, with the success of the city and what has gone on in, in the world, more applicants are wanting to come to our, you know, to apply and want to come to our university. That increase now, we are, we are slightly tilted to out-of-state over in-state. And that's unique. You not only have a couple of things that play with that is, if I'm sending my student out of state, my first question is, how can they do this? How can they do this? And how can they go visit relatives, work? All those things are a decision a parent needs to make. In our case, we have a large percentage, over 25% of our students are Pell Grant recipients. We have scholarship students. Those students have to work by their own hands, either on campus as we provide as much of the workforce or outside of the workforce. That was my example earlier. I went to PBA. Again, back in 92, the city was not what the city is today. I had to have a car because I had to drive out to Palm Beach Lakes to work so I could, you know, provide for my balance of my bill. These students are still in that same, with the rising cost of tuition and cost of living, they still have to work. It's a big part of what, that, that core of what we provide. We also provide additional cost to our parking decals. So, some of the things we put in place, it used to be pretty reasonable to park at PBA. We've increased that to, well, so, a semester is what it used to cost for a year. So, we've doubled the cost of our decals. So, we're managing economically. We're managing it with education. You know, we're managing with the freshman choice. One day, maybe the sophomore would be it. As our freshmen realize they can rely, not have to rely on a car, they become sophomores and then become juniors. So, when we get these classes through, our goal is the overall quantity of cars on campus will be reduced by managing these things. So, to your point, it is a concern of ours. We're not just like, oh, well, let's just make as enough parking. But this parking garage takes the pressure off having the cars go over to family church through our campus in traffic. These, majority of these cars will be low impact to the peak traffic. And, and Mayor, I fully understand your concern on a large structure of this. I, like, I hear you. I understand. We did try to make these modifications to the garage to blend into a, what I would call a develop, a development that would, the garage meets the aesthetics of the building, right? Instead of it sticking out. We want the route of what Commissioner Ward mentioned. We went with the route with more of that kind of dynamic look based on recommendations from staff and discussions about how we could lead into the cultural quarter, which, you know, starts with us and goes down. So, something kind of aesthetic-pleasing. But the end result of that was kind of this, kind of thumb that stuck out, you know, it was just like this, this kind of odd look when we were going for something. So, it was strategic. It wasn't like, eh, nobody will care. It was very strategic. The new design is trying to make it blend, similar to the Cohen Project, the West Point, where the garage looks like the building a little bit. It has screening, examples of the convention center, examples of, what, we got the Kravitz Center that has this metal screening outside to kind of blend into the building that it provides. And all over campus, I mean, all over the city, you have similar, you know, similar garages that have this screening or some type of built-in that goes along with the structure. So, we do understand. But I will tell you, the impact, I know you're looking at a picture. But if you could realize the impact of the students, and I, and I believe you can get there with this, the impact of the students that are going to be housed in this and the impact of the structure they're going to park in to the community outweighs the slightly larger garage than we would prefer, right? We wouldn't prefer to do that. We would rather build less. But today, we can bring it all on campus, be self-reliant, reduce the needs out there in the community. And then, going forward, we know exactly where the, where the future buildings would be and do we need parking in those future ones? The goal is not to have additional parking within the community. So, I know it was long-winded, but I just wanted to share that the impact of this project will far outweigh the concerns on, on the structure.
Well, that's, that's subjective. That's your opinion? I have a different opinion.
I understand.
An 11-story parking garage on a major corridor in my urban core. In my view, there, there's, there must be another way to get this done. If you look at the other tall buildings along even Flagler, many of them have incorporated parking at the base of those buildings. They have not just stuck a parking structure on Flagler. And I don't know if you've considered that here. I'm not, I'm not here to design buildings. I'm just here as...
Design something that we...
A lowly mayor, just trying to give my opinion on a project that I see out there. And I'm just expressing it. Our job is not to redesign it. I just wanted to ask some questions. But I do find it a little bit ironic that at the same time you are saying that you are struggling with finding parking for these students, you're trying to double or increase the number of students you're bringing on campus by almost 50%. It's almost like you want your cake and have it and be able to eat it, too. But anyway, and I'm just stating publicly, again, I love the university. I love the leadership of the university. I think you are tremendous corporate citizens. But I love the city as well. I love what we're doing in our downtown quarter as well. And an 11-story parking garage on Dixie Highway is not compatible with the vision that I think we've been trying to create for this city. So, I'm going to shut up and let me go talk to some other commissioners and we'll get back. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I am hearing several different things and I'm softening, though I am also someone that is not truly in favor of an 11-story parking structure. Some things that I've heard that are, that I'm considering is, I can appreciate the ambition to go from 3,000 students to 5,000. I appreciate that West Palm Beach is a place where you feel that that is the appropriate move to take. And I say that when I look at news that I received as recently as today that shows funding in jeopardy at universities, institutions of higher education such as Harvard, Cornell, Columbia, Northwestern and others that are losing funding, that PBAU is ambitiously looking at increasing from 3,000 to 5,000 students. I, I think that that is something that I hope that you're successful in doing. What I also heard you say is that you're recovering lost parking spaces. So, there's over 800 spaces that are currently, that have been, that you've been reduced by, that you, instead of having sprawling spaces and multiple agreements with other individuals or entities, that you're looking to consolidate and go vertical instead of the sprawling approach and be in jeopardy of renewing leases and other opportunities that those partners may have. So, I heard you say that. I recognize that we're talking about dorms and we're not talking about Class A office space. But I do believe that it is important that it is still aesthetically pleasing to all of West Palm Beach. So, I believe that that's going to be the biggest area of compromise and innovation is identifying how you make it be something that is complementary to the vision of the city, to what this body has worked very hard to ensure occurs, which is that walkable community of West Palm Beach. So, even though this may not, this is a parking structure where I'm looking for something that does not look institutional. So, if you can come back and talk to, say something or show me something that shows that you've made a very intentional approach at making it be softer versus the steel, cement, concrete enclosure, I think that would be beneficial. And, that's it, again. I also want to say that I can follow PBAU's mission. I appreciate the comments by the President. I like local institutions of higher education. And I had an employee that left employment with me, went to be PBAU, was able to work there and get her degree and then come back and work with me at a higher salary and with more roles and responsibilities. So, there are many advantages that I see. But I think that it's important for you to be able to show that you're in line with what's going on with other buildings, that you recognize the vision of our downtown and that you're working very hard to ensure that that occurs.
President Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to just echo the comments made about the institution being in our community. I think I wrote down 4 million hours' worth of workship. And I know my office has worked directly with you all to help residents, you know, clean up situations in their yards and their houses. And, you know, in another forum, I would love to discuss formalizing something like that with the city. I think that would be really wonderful for our residents here. But to the topic at hand, Mr. Brown, when you were talking about the cultural corridor and the look and the feel of the garage, you know, I really, I didn't know that, that that was, you know, what influenced and inspired the original design. I thought that was very interesting because I do think, you know, one of the goals, you know, or main points that I am looking at here is, is this contextually appropriate to this area? And you brought up a really good point about the cultural corridor. And when I, you know, I don't know, Joanie, if you can pull up that one photo where it was pulled, a photo pulled back from the garage. It was in one of the later slides. That's right, yeah. It does, it, it, that's really hard to swallow there. You know, it's interesting that we're not talking about the housing complex. I think that that, you know, you've moved that in to the middle of, towards the middle of the campus. It seems to go well with the downtown core. It's, you know, but thinking about the cultural corridor, now that you've brought that up, you know, that, that is, that just really sticks out because I think as a number-one goal for me is, is this contextually appropriate to the area? The second goal that I have when looking at this is, does it increase traffic and parking congestion? So, I really do appreciate what you said in having us think about that this is on the outside skirts of the campus and that you don't want students walking and crossing as cars are coming in. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate hearing that there were 800 parking spaces that are in the, either have been eliminated or in the process of being eliminated. But I also had the question that if that's 800 spots that have already been eliminated that we know of, and now we're going to be replacing them with this, what happens when the enrollments increase? So, will then we need to look at as a campus either additional parking spaces or, as has been suggested, decreasing the amount of permits that are given? And have you all given thought to that?
Well, I know that your staff actually added additional conditions of approval with this request in regards to not only the parking, but also annual and biannual, Chris may need to speak to it, reports. Because we don't know, I mean, it may take, you know, 20 years, may take 10 years. But as Kurt also mentioned, if you do come as a freshman and you can't have a car and then you realize you don't need a car, then you don't have a car when you're a sophomore or a junior or senior. So, that's another basically evolution that we need to consider. But I think Chris should probably speak to the parking itself.
Good evening. Chris Hagan with Kimley Horn Associates. My address is 477 South Rosemary Avenue, Suite 215 here in City West Palm Beach. I was sworn in at the beginning of the proceedings. And as mentioned, we did, we went through some extensive traffic, sets of traffic analyses for this project, both one that looked at the increase of 3,000 students to 5,000 students. And that was reviewed both by the city and Palm Beach County. And Palm Beach County provided a TPS letter for that. And then we did a site-specific study just for this building. But to your question, Commissioner Lambert, one of the things that was interesting in this, in the study that we did for the city is, is that we were asked to take an additional step to try to determine the trip, exercise we hadn't done in the many iterations of studies we've done for the campus in the past, to determine the trip generation difference between residential students and commuter students. And what we found was, in rough numbers, the commuter student trip generation was roughly four times what it was for the residential students during the AM peak hour. And that's kind of the critical time of, of traffic for the university. Because in the PM peak hour, a lot, by that time, a lot of the classes have ended. The PM peak hour trip generation rate isn't as high just overall for the university. But in the morning, and that makes sense when you think about it logistically because 8:00 AM classes, 9:00 AM classes, a resident student is getting out of bed, getting dressed, walking across campus to their class. They're not getting in their car and going anywhere. If they're getting in their car, it's probably midday going to a place of employment or maybe out for lunch somewhere off-campus or recreation or entertainment purposes outside of that peak hour. The commuter students are coming in the morning. So, yeah...
May I ask a clarifying question, Mayor?
Yes.
So, are you saying that this garage is mainly for commuters?
No.
Or, I'm sorry, for those that are living in the residence hall?
Primarily residential. It's...
And you will restrict it to them?
So, the, so what's going to happen is, is that, that, right now, the vision, and we worked with the university to try to determine this because it's all based on predictions. The expectation is that roughly 70% of the garage would be used by resident students and then 30% would be used by employee commuter, you know, students. And some of that may, especially for an employee and commuters, may replace some of the commuter lots, some of the commuter parking that is currently located, for example, on the family church property, et cetera, some of those off-site leases. Because the, this garage is, is being constructed in tandem with the residence hall. Because the, this garage is, is being constructed in tandem with the residence hall. So really, the change that's happening on campus is bringing more students to living on campus, especially really converting, and some, some of it may be an increase in students, but some of it may be converting students that today are commuters and driving to campus to now become residents, living on campus and therefore taking trips that were AM peak hour trips, driving to campus and turning them into walking trips within the campus.
Commissioner Peduzzi.
I'll try to be brief. There's so many things, thoughts that are going through my mind and so many things I want to say and I'm not exactly sure what I should say, but I am a huge proponent of the mission of this university. I think that they are doing a tremendous job developing, good citizens, not only educating our youth, but, but really fostering that, that thought of serving others and being good citizens. And I think that is probably impacting the way I feel about this situation and that it's, it's hard for me to separate the two, so I'm trying to put on my cap as a city commissioner and say, how do I always look at these things? And what I do know is that this body, time after time, has issued waivers for height for for-profit development. And this is a university that's not-for-profit, that I strongly believe in their mission. They want to be able to accommodate more students and I think all universities, isn't that the goal of all universities is to get bigger and to be able to educate more students over time? Vanderbilt University, they want to get bigger. They want to come here, they want to double their size in their, in their master's programs in certain fields. I think it's something that every university wants to do and I, I don't think we should fault PBAU for wanting to have that same goal. And I think they're fulfilling, you know, a huge, important role in our community with their students. I have firsthand seen their students work in my businesses and my law firm over the years and they are some of the best workers I've ever had. They are just grounded intellectually and morally. And, and I think that if, if we can look at it that way, that this university is a very important part of our city. And time after time, as I've said, this dais, my colleagues on this dais have approved height waivers for for-profit developers. This is an odd conversation we're having with a not-for-profit. I do agree with my colleagues and I do agree with you, Mayor, and I do agree with you, Commissioner Warren, that, you know, if we could soften the look of this thing and, and make it, so I have less of a problem with, with the height and more of a problem probably with, with how do we make this thing just blend in better? Whether it be, I think that the abstract one that Commissioner Ward had mentioned and I think you brought up, that it was only one little side view, it's hard to see exactly what that would look like, you know, zoomed back and how it would make it fit, or if there's some other way that you can soften it, that we're not looking at a mass. But I don't necessarily think, when, when you look at those pictures that are zoomed out, that, that it doesn't fit in with the, with the area. You know, you see buildings of similar height everywhere around it and in the view, maybe not right next door, but in the view, there's buildings of similar height and there's, you know, so I don't necessarily think it, it doesn't fit in, but if there's some way that you can soften it, I think that hopefully my colleagues would, would see it in a little different light. But I am looking forward to supporting this. I think you need the parking spaces. Going to Family Church myself, I know that there's a tremendous need for parking spaces in that area. I know that we had approached the Rotary Club of West Palm Beach, had approached Palm Beach Atlantic in an attempt to hold our Rotary meetings there at the university. And the problem was, there's no parking. We'd have to have an agreement as Rotary with Family Church to see if we could pay to have our, you know, vehicles parked there. There's just no parking. And I think that if we start limiting the numbers by hundreds of vehicles by requiring you to limit the height and you can't accommodate the number of vehicles that you know are coming, that you know you already have, then I think we're doing a disservice to the residents in that area because those vehicles we know are going to overflow onto their streets and then we're going to have another problem on our hands. So I'm looking forward to supporting this with the full height. I just hope that you can soften it so that it fits in and blends in with the, with the surrounding area.
Okay. I'm not sure I would equate the height of Class A office building with the height of a parking garage, but that's another, we can have that debate. Let's work our way back around. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. The reason, and thank you, Commissioner Peduzzi, for your comments. I was driving, I was riding back on the bright line yesterday from Miami and looking at a bunch of garages. And the reason I was asking about that, one, the, I think there's a difference between what I was trying to say about the screening versus the color. The color, that dark color, that was more jarring to me. And I agree, I'm not necessarily upset about the height, from what I understand from the conversations. You guys have looked and churned at the numbers. I went to a campus, I do agree with the mayor, I went to a campus and I told you guys this when we met, that restricted freshmen and sophomores from driving on campus. And I think that maybe you should look into that. But regardless, I feel like you guys have done the numbers and looked in and worked with staff heavily to see, hey, these are the numbers that we need to meet, this is the target base. Looking at the garages that I was looking at on my, on my journey, there's artistic level to them. And we have Sibylle, who's fantastic with the city. We have art all over this city. I wouldn't want to see a mural just placed at the top. Maybe you can build that in, working with the Norton, working with Sibylle. You're, you're right next to a beautiful, a beautiful part and history of our, of our city. Maybe you can incorporate greenery into it and, and, you know, there's one way to lean completely into the modern or to try to build off of the historical nature. If you can't build off the historical nature, then maybe lean into that modern area and not just have a blanket white building, but something very cool and aesthetic. I do think the screening is necessary because it doesn't look like a garage with that screening, but maybe you can work towards that. I don't want to keep you guys from trying to get your plan in. I know you guys have to align things with the start of the campus. I just, I really think you guys could do more and not have the expense of creating a historical building and do something really cool where people aren't looking at the fact that it's a garage, they're looking at the art that's on the side of the building. And that happens a lot at Anya. I mean, I get so many friends from out of the city sending me pictures on Instagram from some of our murals, the girl and the guy that's looking at the girl. That is something that's shown all the time. People aren't looking at the building, they're looking at what was put on there. So I feel like that could be incorporated to make this so much more digestible. But just to harp on the count, where did you guys get this number from? Did staff give it to you? Did you guys, where is that number of parking spaces coming from?
Good evening again. Chris Hagan with Kimble Horn. I'll try to just give a really high level because, without getting too deep in the weeds on the, on the parking. We are required by a prior condition of approval on, on the campus to conduct an annual parking study. And so that includes every year going out and counting the total number of occupied spaces in all the parking facilities, not just on campus, but in their off-site leased, leases, so over on Family Church, Memorial Presbyterian Church, et cetera. This past year, the total amount of parking that was observed was 1,119 spaces. We always need to have a buffer, so we plan for about 10%. So that takes it to 1,231 spaces that would be needed today. The additional residential demand that would be, we would expect to be generated by this is roughly 393 spaces. So that takes it to a total of 1624 in the future with, with this application. On campus today, there are 810 spaces. It was already referenced before that we would lose 72 parking spaces because within the footprint of this building is a surface parking lot that today has 72 spaces. So if you then add back in the 880 space, 888 spaces with this garage, we'd be at 1,626 spaces. So that is almost exactly aligned with the 1624. In fact, that's really too close, that's too tight. But what I haven't mentioned is that, of course, there are the off-site leases, but those change from year to year. Every year that we do the parking study, we have to get updated leases and as was shown on a prior slide, some of those leases that they've had over the years, like the tent site has gone away. There, there used to be parking at Flagler Towers, that's gone away. That's where the South Flagler House is being built, et cetera. So some of the, anything that's off-site is not guaranteed to remain in the future. The other resource, though, that the university has is the parking, as mentioned, at the Rinker Athletic Campus off of Parker Avenue. That's 365 spaces. So that really gives you, gives the university control of enough parking to meet its needs, to have an adequate buffer, but that's kind of about it.
Thank you.
I have a question, two questions. Are there any active uses on the first floor of this proposed garage?
Proposed, yeah, somebody else can better speak to that, but yes, I am aware that that.
Mayor, thank you. The, the first floor facing Dixie Highway is in active use. It's over 5,000 square feet of active use. That is set up to be a fitness center for the students. It'll be where our group classes, your zumba, your cycling, anything that they can do in a group setting. That will be along Dixie Highway facing.
Along the entire?
Entire run of.
Length of that building.
Yes.
Second question, how many additional parking spaces can you add to the, what do you call it, the rec? The rack? You have 300-some now, can you expand that?
So we did some research on that. Some of the limitations we have at the rack are, there's a FDOT area that we are unable to build in based on 95 and their future growth or future plans. And then there also is certain restrictions out at the rack based on the FAA deed restrictions because that used to be in, it is in line with the airfield. So there are some restrictions. We did look at some of those and there was limited areas without reducing the footprint of the athletic fields. And one of the reasons that we're slow to remove athletic fields under NCAA Division II, there are requirements to have certain fields, certain practice fields, certain facilities. So we, even though it's a large facility out there, it is limited when you have so many Division II varsity sports.
All right, we'll work our way back around. Did you, okay, President Lambert?
Thank you. I'm going to go back to my two goals of, of this project and the first is about being contextually appropriate. Can, I don't know, what is the process for this coming back to us with a different design? Because I do tend to agree with the mayor, we're not designers here, but I do think that we can give you a vision. I do remember sitting on this dais some years ago and a commissioner once saying, can you make the garage look more, look less like a garage? And so I think that's what we're saying here as well.
One, I want you to let you know that Palm Beach Atlantic is totally in favor of that discussion. We had the original design for a reason and that, that did not seem to be the most favorable design from feedback. So we are showing these additional designs as a way to blend it with the building. But as we talk about the cultural corridor and the corridor south of us, we'd love to bring a design of the exterior this evening and I believe Joni will show a condition that we're proposing, that upon approval of the garage and the, the building today, that we will be open to a condition to continue to work with staff, your arts folks, and then the commission to do exactly what Commissioner Ward said, is to bring the, the art to the side of the building, bring a finish that you guys are happy with, but it fits into the surrounding area. Again, we, we want to be that partner, it, but that does not like take away from the need we have, right? We want to do both, right? So yes, that would be something and if Joni wants to show that condition, that would be great.
I have another, if I could just bring up my second point.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The second point was, and I think Chris spoke to this, but I just want to make sure I understood, and I clearly understood what you were saying, because my second goal is not to increase traffic in this area, especially South Dixie coming, you know, north is backed up for quite some time, I hear about it every morning. And so you're saying that the goal of this garage is to be 70% residents who live right there, who will not be driving in during peak hours? And I just want to confirm that and make sure I hear that correctly.
Correct, yeah, that, again, the, because, especially because it's, I mean, it's really being built in tandem with the, with the residential, residence hall. The intent is that it's primarily, the parking would be serving that. The university does, from time to time, change the designation of facilities within the campus. So, you know, one year, again, we've done this study on an annual basis, year to year. So sometimes, you know, a, for, you know, just for needs, a, and this happens a lot more in the smaller surface lots where it's easy to kind of change from one to the other. One may change one year from, you know, commuters to residents or vice versa. You know, so the, that may fluctuate from, you know, to like 80/20 or, or 65/35 or some in, in the future, depending on the designations within the, the rest of the campus. But the intent, as it's been explained to us and as I think makes sense, given that it's basically right next to the residence hall, is it would be a significant amount, probably the majority, and again, at this point intended to be 70% designated for resident permit holders.
Okay, so there would be less people driving in from all different park, surface parking lots, they'd all be housed there now walking to their classes instead of driving.
And that's what's been explained to us by the university is that the goal of the, the whole application of the residence hall to begin with is to bring more students on campus to begin with to, to, you know, to, to change that dynamic and to make more of them, you know, as, you know, people who are living on campus, walking to class during those, those peak hours. And I commute on South Dixie Highway every single morning from Prospect Park to downtown and, and am hoping that, that, that it does not add a lot of traffic to Dixie as well too. And I, again, believe that from, from what we've been discussing with the university as far as the overall vision for the campus.
Okay, thank you.
I do remember, as they're coming up, and I don't know if I'm the only member of the dais that was around when we were discussing, what is that, the tent site?
That was the tent site.
And the detailed discussions we had on the look of that parking garage. I mean, with, you know, it was how it was wrapped, it was what it would look like. And I, I thought I would get something like that tonight to, to, to give me some, some comfort. But that, that is a way to address kind of the obtrusiveness, if you will, of a parking, of a large parking garage on a development that has a lot of traffic going around it and I haven't seen that kind of creativity. But anyway, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you for your graciousness, Commissioner, President Lambert and Mayor James, because I do know that it was me that said, I do not want a garage that looks like a garage.
Oh, you were around then?
It was me, I said it, I said it. I own it and I still do not want a garage that looks like a garage. And I'm just looking forward to the solutions that you have to be able to ensure that this can move forward for you in a timely manner.
Dr. Swin, you approached the mic, are you trying to speak to something?
I just wanted to augment the comment of who's going to be using the parking deck. Most universities like ours, 95% of the students live on campus and that's to get a uniform campus experience. We've been forced to have 35% of our students commuters because we didn't have enough housing and we didn't have enough. And because of that, we're in this sort of situation. And so the beauty of this residence hall is that we can take that 35% that were commuters and have the vast majority of them now live on campus. That gets all of the commuter trips back and forth two or three times a day off the street. So in fact, having these cars in the garage during the day and then our students using it at night and weekends for their jobs makes a difference. We don't live in Boston, we don't have a subway. We want to have those kinds of things, but our students find it hard to get to their jobs. We have 20% first gen students, 30% students that are Pell eligible, about 25%. Also, if we, we would love, we started looking at a garage underneath a building, it adds like $50 million and that is not affordable in workforce housing. So I just wanted to give you that context, thank you.
And that's why I asked if you could expand the number of spaces out at the rack because you could have more of them parking. If they, if they only need the cars to go to jobs or something on the weekend, they could park the cars out there during the week when they're going to classes, they could do whatever and then, and catch shuttles in. So I, I guess it's counterintuitive to say that, for, for me to hear, the students, more students will be able to live on campus, but you're saying, but we still need. students will be able to live on campus, but you're saying, but we still need them to have a place to park their cars on campus. That is kind of counterintuitive, that they're living on campus, they're walking and, and, around even to downtown, and if they needed a place to park their cars for the jobs, then I thought that's what the rack would be for, to accommodate that, and they could catch a shuttle when they needed the car. But I, I, I am not as familiar with your student body as you are. Any other questions, comments from this body? Now, we still need to hear from staff, their floor report, but Jody, do you have something else to say?
I was just gonna point out, I may need some tweaks to this condition, but if the board's pleasure is to let us move forward tonight with our garage as proposed, we would be acceptable to have any condition crafted such that we could not pull a building permit for the garage until such time as we process a major, that would be a major, that word changes to major, amendment so that we can come back and show you elevations of the garage that are acceptable to this commission prior to constructing the garage. But we need to know tonight to move forward that we're okay with the garage height.
Okay, well, we'll put a pin in that. Let's hear from staff, their floor report.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, again, Lynda Louis, Principal Planner for the record. So I'm just gonna jump straight to the concerns regarding the location and design of the garage. So a noted as agenda review, staff has tried to work with the applicant to modify the design, but the applicant has cited the importance of the design as presented as the most functional for the university. The size of the garage is also important to them to be able to address their parking needs as noted by the applicant, so staff understands it from that perspective. So as mentioned, staff did have concerns regarding the design, but, you know, we understand the concerns of the university as well. So despite staff's concerns, the applicant, as mentioned by Joni, has worked with staff to make a number of design concessions regarding the parking garage. As you can see from this image here, perspective, including adding the active uses at the ground level. As mentioned by Kurt, like it is a fitness facility of over 5,000 square feet along the entire frontage. Streetscape improvements along South Dixie Highway to make it more pedestrian-friendly and safe for students to access the fitness facility on Dixie as well as along the perimeter just to enhance the aesthetics of it, as well as the architectural paneling along the Dixie facade of the parking garage. It was really important that staff provide some kind of, that the applicant provides some kind of screening that would mask the garage structure. And staff believes, you know, along the same lines of the, of the applicant, that it is a sculptural element that adds to the context of this cultural corridor. So staff can agree with the treatment of the facade from, from that standpoint. Moving on to the conditions in the resolution, there is one minor correction to condition number 15 in the resolution, which staff would like to clarify for the record. The correction is to the date of the termination of the annual parking report previously adopted by Resolution 27720. The annual parking report adopted under this particular resolution will be replaced by the new traffic conditions in the resolution, which are conditions number 21 through 23. So condition number 15 should be re-terminating August 1st, 2025, and not 2026. The change needs to be made in order to be consistent with the new requirements of the traffic conditions provided in the resolution. So staff, as mentioned earlier on, is recommending approval. We have looked at the standards regarding the site plan as well as their requests, and staff has found that the amendment does comply with the amendment standards in Section 9432 of our zoning and land development regulations. And that concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. The traffic, city's traffic engineer is also present tonight, if there are any questions.
Any questions for staff? President Lambert? Oh, if we could here, yes.
I'm sorry, but...
Oh, that's important.
I, I did have a question, because I reviewed the application and the justification statement. And in addition to the amendment standards, the site plan review standards also are in the standards. And I don't see that, any information from staff's been given with regard to the site plan qualitative review standards and whether or not you had an opinion as to...
It is cited, and those standards are answered in the staff report that is provided as an attachment to the ACM.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now, President Lambert?
Thank you. I was wondering if our traffic engineer might be able to talk a little bit about the conditions, because I do think that those are important, again, to my second goal of making sure we're not increasing traffic in the area.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Veronica Altuve, City Traffic Engineer. So there are three conditions that were set forth with this application. Condition number one has to do with the increase of student population from 2,000, excuse me, from 3,000 to 5,000 student. The applicant has mentioned that the goal for the university is for them to become more residential in order to curb traffic and to continue with more transportation demand management in order to curb traffic. Now, they have used standard traffic generations from what we call the Institute of Transportation Engineer. And when they use those trip generations, it appears to me that the traffic generator by the increase of students is low. And the reason I say that, it's because the second traffic study that the applicant produced, which I asked him to collect actual counts for the residential and commuter students, have a much higher trip generation. So because of that inconsistency between the two, and because understanding that the university has a goal, we allow them to move forward even though we don't know exactly what the trips are going to be. So the first condition is we're replacing the parking annual report with a traffic and parking monitoring report. We will continue to collect parking demand data on an annual basis to make sure that the university has enough parking. And we're also going to collect, and this is new, this is added, every two years, the university needs to collect traffic throughout the entire university, from every single parking resource coming in and out, to establish what the trip characteristics are. So every two years, they're going to provide that information, along with how many students are using shuttles, how many students receive parking permits, and as another, and a series of other informational that we're requiring in, in order to make sure that they're, they are, they are achieving the goal of curbing the traffic. So that's condition number one. So we will know sooner than later whether or not they're achieving their goal of becoming a more residential university and their transportation demand management are curbing either the need of more parking or whether or not they are really producing a lot of traffic or they're really curbing the traffic. So that's condition number one. So every two years, starting in 2026, and that's why the previous condition is terminating in August 1st, 2025, because they have to provide the very last parking study before the next cycle come, which is when they will provide the new parking study and the very first set of traffic counts. So that's condition number one. Condition number two has to do with, well, what happens if they're not demonstrating that they're curbing the traffic and they're not lowering the demand for parking? So we're going to require them to do, sooner than later, additional analysis in order to demonstrate what additional impacts they have based on those trips that we would be establishing at that point, which may say that they are going to be producing more traffic, they're gonna be needing more parking. So how are they going to take care of that situation? And again, sooner than later. So, and condition number two, it's dependent then on the results of the first condition of that monitoring report. Condition number three has to do with the, with the residential tower and the parking garage. That area, it's going to be served by a certain number of parking spaces, right? 188 parking spaces, which is going to, traffic is gonna come in and out depending on the type of population that goes inside of that parking garage. So we're asking them that a year after they receive CO of the building, they have to do a monitoring report. And that monitoring report is going to measure whether or not it's, whether or not the traffic that the building is generating, it's consistent with what they said that they were going to do, it was going to generate. If it is more, then we need to look at the area more holistically to make sure that traffic can be accommodated. One of the, one of the measurements that they have to do is they have to do what it's called a signal warrant analysis. They have to look at US-1 Gruber, they have to look at US-1 Anacacia to determine whether or not a signal is needed to handle the volume of traffic that comes in and out of the area. And they have to look observations of the area. They have to make sure that the access points are appropriately operating. And if not, there are other things that we can do, such as perhaps changing traffic patterns in that immediate area of Gruber and Anacacia, in order to make sure that the traffic in that area is managed appropriately. So those are the three conditions of approvals that the applicant has agreed to move forward with.
But all those reports will do, in effect, the cow's already out the barn. These buildings have already been built. So if it means that they are not doing, that they're not meeting their projections, we, we still have a monstrosity of a parking garage there, and there's not really much we can do to that. So it's just giving us information, and I guess hopefully they will come up with solutions that will address the issue, but it's too late then.
So part of the condition of approval is that there is a mechanism that will prevent them from moving forward with an additional, additional proposed applications, and they will not receive any building permits for whatever we have, they have on the pipeline until they address those issues.
All right, so have some leverage.
Yes, sir.
Let, let me ask a question of someone from the university. Are you willing at some point to commit to being proactive on limiting the number of students with cars, particularly those who are, now, now that you're moving more toward a residential university, under the current configuration, when you're more of a commuter university, you limited, freshmen can't have cars. Now that you're more, moving in a direction of being more residential, why can't you say, now we don't want freshmen, sophomores, or juniors to have cars? So, some variation of that, to be more proactive in moving and maintaining the pedestrian-friendly nature of our downtown? Are you willing to make any kind of commitment along those lines?
We're working closely. Veronica, it's been great, you're Jessica with our management program. So the commitment is, we're gonna continue to do and work with the city on this. The freshman no cars was thoughtful, and it came at the right, appropriate time to help. And additional restrictions will come with those plans, but we, we worked through a strategic plan. So the answer is, we're gonna continue to work with the city. We've been here 56 years, we've continued to work with the city on different aspects of it, and yes, you have our commitment that we're gonna continue to work with the city on those restrictions. These reports, these are, these are pretty extensive costs to us to report the traffic and make sure we're, you know, meeting what this plan and this project was proposed. So there's an expense to that, and the, we want to stay within that, those reports and those suggestions we had today, so that we don't, you know, lose favor with the city, yes. But also the impact to our students. So if we have traffic, it causes problems for our students too. So our commitment is, we're gonna continue to look at that, and we will look at whether it's sophomores, whether it's a different, there's a limited amount of decals, so it's gonna continue to be looked at, Mayor, I can, I guarantee you that.
Can you go vertical in any, if any to land out at the rack?
Again, no, I have a limit. A couple of things I can't do at the rack. I can't go vertical beyond a one-story building, and then I also can't, today, under the restrictions, and I can't have any type of residential, any type of classroom, anything that would keep a, a student or a employee there for more than eight hours.
No, I meant vertical like for parking, so you can increase the...
At this point, I cannot go vertical out there.
Two, three stories, you can't do that.
Right. Correct at this time.
Can you share with my, my lawyer, whatever the authority, legal authority is that prevents you from doing that, so we can do our own analysis?
We can continue to look at opportunities like that, yep.
No, I, whatever you're saying you can't do, and why you can't do it, if you could share that documentation with, with the city attorney, please? Any other questions for staff? President Lambert?
I have a comment that, you know, to our traffic engineer's point, I'm sorry, I know that you're new, is it Veronica? Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that. You know, I know that when you went over those conditions with me previously, that, you know, what I hear you saying is that this allows us to require a regular cadence of reports, and that maybe even when you were negotiating them with the applicant, that they weren't very happy with them at first because of what Mr. Brown mentioned, the cost and the extensive work that will be required, but that it will allow for us to take some action with them, some immediate, some maybe long-term, but that there is a mechanism in place for holding them accountable, because I think that that is very important.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions for staff?
Question for our attorney.
Okay.
If we do approve this, I think we've had some discussion about the, the look of the garage. Does anything need to change in this motion for that?
Well, there, there's a problem with approving with a, if, if the board finds that there's an issue with the garage itself, because one of the questions that I asked the staff was, the site plan review standards are in 9435. This ordinance is also saying that 9435 is met. Two of those standards that I have heard you all discussing, one is a harmonious, harmonious and efficient organization. It says that all elements of the plan shall be organized harmoniously and efficiently in relation to the topography, the size and type of the property affected, the character of adjoining property, and the type and the size of the building. So I heard some conversation about it not fitting in character. The other standard is screening and buffering, this one more specific to the look of the garage itself. And it says, fences, walls, vegetative screening shall provide where needed to protect, to protect residents and users from undesirable views, lights, noise, and other adverse offsite effects, and to protect the residents and users of offsite development and onsite adverse effects. If you adopt an ordinance that says that they meet all of those standards, because that's what the ordinance says, but then say, but you have to bring it back to show us that it meets the standard, it, it doesn't work. So I would say that if they need to do further revisions or to show you the facade that meets the screening and buffering requirements of the site plan review 9435-3, that they should bring it to you for review, so you can approve it and say, yes, we think it meets the standard, or it does not.
So staff, I mean, are, are you saying that it meets... So, staff, I mean, are you saying that it meets the standards or doesn't meet the standards? I got a lawyer telling me that, you know, from what we're talking about, it doesn't meet the standard.
Yes. So, staff has written in the staff report that it does meet the standard, but again, like the commission doesn't have to agree with staff if they feel or compelled that it does not meet the standard. But in staff's opinion, it has met the buffering and screening requirements with the architectural paneling.
Yeah. Just, and for the board, and the reason I bring this up is because you're looking at a plan development, one of the requirements under site plan review says that the recommendations of Platts and Plans Review Committee and the Planning and Zoning Administrator concerning site plan applications for special use or plan development shall be advisory. So, the information that they provided to you is information that you can consider, but you get, you've been discussing and what I've heard you discuss is that there are issues with the screening and buffering as presented tonight.
Mr. Green, do you want to say something?
Rick Green, Development Services Director. When we brought this application to the planning board, yes, we did recommend approval. I believe the applicant had been through three resubmittals because we had concerns not only with the height of the building, with the size of the garage. It's the largest freestanding garage in the city. If you remember when we brought the West Palm Point project, the tent site, we recommended denial of the garage because it was a typical surface or elevated garage with exposed cars. We recommended denial. The applicant went back and came back with three proposals, all of which were very good, and we chose one of the three to move forward with. When we had this discussion at agenda review subsequent to that call, in that meeting, we reached out to the applicant's team and suggested that, yes, we recommended support, but at the time, we were going through the review process, there was no commitment or issue on the part of Palm Beach Atlantic to lower the size of that garage as much as we kept pushing. We were weighing the advantages of having the residential component as part of the campus, but after agenda review, we said our preference would be for you to come in with the seven-story recommendation and lower the garage if at all possible. So, we are offering to the commission a recommendation. Certainly, you don't have to abide by that recommendation, but we thought it did meet the standards at eleven. Our preference certainly would be a lesser height for the garage.
But the architectural standards that the city attorney is now mentioning, you guys say that it is your opinion that those all have been met, the screening and et cetera?
Yes. Could it be better? Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Ward?
I understand that we're, if we were to move forward with this, we're agreeing that the standard has been met. And my perspective is, yes, it has been met. I just think that we all think it could be better, just like any other aesthetically pleasing item that we try to decide, just like the Arts and Life Committee, is that it could be better. Will you agree to try to make it better? If they're voluntarily saying, we want to come back to you, we want your input, we want to do this, how is that the burden that we're putting on them if they're volunteering? Because I just remember when we were discussing the car wash issue, they came and voluntarily agreed to do something because we were not allowed to require them to do that under the standards of approval. Wouldn't this be similar to that?
The whole issue that I'm having is that you're doing site plan approval. And if you approve it, they then can go get their building permit, right? So, I think that the absolute best way to manage or handle it is that the applicant bring back to you, they can continue this item or request a continuation to be brought back within the next sixty days with the exterior facade already in place so that you can actually review what it is you're ultimately approving. I mean, that's, they have options. They have an option to amend the application to, if they so chose, to go to a lower height, which I've heard from the testimony this evening that they don't want to do. But I also heard that the commission from most, if not all, I don't, the comments seem to suggest that the presentation of the facade being requested for approval this evening is something that you're uncomfortable with. The best way to address it is to bring it back with the additional information you need so you can make a decision.
Follow-up?
Yes.
I, I'm putting on my different hat on this, but I don't want to be a killer of the project. And so, I know that sometimes we have to weigh those things and say sixty days might not seem a lot to us, but sixty days may seem like a lot to the applicant. And considering that these are a partner of ours, we work with them constantly and we have all of these things to say, even if it doesn't mean us coming up here and having, having them present it to us, to come to us and say, what do you guys think about this? Sibylle, what do you think about that? Maybe voluntarily going in front of our Arts and Life Committee. These are our partners here within the city. I feel like we do owe them the sense of trust that they're going to try to do the best they can to make this happen, just like I'm trusting that they're saying they need these parking and we've heard from all of the staff that looked at it and said, yeah, they need this, that we as a body can move forward knowing that we don't always have to put straps on someone to do something that we're asking them to do. They're our partners. It seems to me like they want to do that. And so, to limit that and say, okay, now we're going to wait sixty days for them to do that, throwing off their entire schedule to start when the school period starts, to me seems like a deal killer, not a dealmaker.
And just for clarification, I wasn't saying that it had to be sixty days. You must bring it back within sixty days is what our rules say. It could be two weeks from today. It could be as long as it takes for them to bring it back, but the maximum amount of time that's permissible under the code is sixty days.
And I push back on the fact that because they have been good corporate citizens, that somehow entitles them to extra liberties. We have an obligation as this body to do what we feel is in the best interest of the city, consistent with whatever the standards are. And a trust me kind of, we're going to trust them kind of attitude, I don't think is the appropriate. We need to have either something in writing or part of the motion or something like that. Have they been good corporate citizens? Yes, absolutely. On the other hand, trust but verify, okay? Just because, listen, I understand they have their needs, but our obligation is to do what's best for the city as a whole. And just because they have been good corporate partners does not mean we should relinquish our obligation. Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the sentiment expressed by Commissioner Ward. Further, I think that we have done approvals in the past with, with conditions. We've had people come back. I think, Madam City Attorney, with all due respect, I think that the way that you proposed it is one way of doing it. I don't think it's the only legal way. It is maybe the preferable way, maybe the way that you, the opinion that you believe is preferable to another opinion, but I think there's other ways of legally doing it.
Oh, you're the lawyer now?
I am a lawyer. And so is Commissioner Ward. We're both lawyers. All three of us are. And so, what I'm saying is I think that that is, if she wants to tell me, no, no, my opinion is the only opinion and that there is no other way of legally doing it, if she's saying that emphatically, then, then, okay, I'll accept that, that there's no other legal way of doing it. I don't, I didn't necessarily hear that from her.
What is your proposal?
I can, I'll do a motion. I don't want to step on Commissioner Lambert's toes, but I would...
But I would like to hear from the applicant. She's been waiting at the podium and she may have something that might make us all happy if, if you don't mind.
Yeah. And I'm not making the motion now. What I'm saying, if I were to make the motion, I would just do it with, with conditions of providing us with a, with facade design improvements that could be voted on at the next meeting.
Jody?
Thank you.
Ms. Brinklin?
What I would like to propose, not unlike what's on your screen right now, I mean, staff has already opined that we do meet the standards. The landscaping and buffering standards are usually at ground level, by the way, like for a multifamily or a non-residential commercial. But what's on your screen here is approve with conditions. So, what we would request, if it would be acceptable to you all to have a comfort level, would be that a condition be written and read into the record such that prior to issuance of a building permit for the garage, the applicant shall file a major amendment and gain approval of the facade treatment by the city commission or something similar to that. And that would allow us to move forward because not moving forward now would be very detrimental to the construction of the tower. We can wait on the garage and go through this process and make sure you all are comfortable with the ultimate treatment of the garage, but to slow down the tower, that is very impactful to our development timeline.
Madam City Attorney, can we bifurcate these, these, these issues? I mean...
I think the only way that you could add the condition that's being recommended is that you also amend section six of the proposed ordinance under the screening and buffering provision that says that it's met to say that it may be met upon further granting of a major amendment to the PD as it relates to the facade.
I mean, I, maybe I'll let staff respond to that because like I indicated typically...
Can I make a recommendation? Can you huddle with, with city attorney or your attorney huddle with city attorney? We have some cards here.
Okay.
So, I wanted to go to the cards, let people speak, and maybe there's a way you guys can huddle offline and see if there's some agreement you could reach. All right, I've got two cards, Michael Zeff and Eric Saldivar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry. The comment of Mr. Zeff is for item ten point one. The second comment card is for general comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. They gave it to me. So, I only have one card on this matter. Mr. Zeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael Zeff, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. Want to share with you that this project before you this evening was thoroughly reviewed by our Government Affairs Committee, which voted unanimously to endorse this project and we encourage your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, huddle time is over.
That wasn't very long.
Hope y'all made some progress. Applicant, city attorney, come on back. Applicant, city attorney, come on back. If you haven't resolved it, let's, let's, let's move on. Okay. So, we've heard the cards. A question I'll have, was there any resolution to whether we could bifurcate these, whether we need to amend the proposed motion? Do we have any direction along those lines? I'll start with you, Madam City Attorney.
If the board is comfortable with finding that the standards of ninety-four thirty-five have been met and retaining that language within their ordinance and making it a condition to come back for approval of the facade as a major amendment to the PD, which will require them to go through the entire process, which they've agreed to do in order to make that happen, and before a building permit is issued for the garage, then you can make that part of your motion.
All right. So, I guess we're now waiting for a motion from, from this body and we'll see where we are once we get a motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
I just want to clarify again. Ninety-four dash thirty-five, staff did say that the applicant had met that, that, okay. Thank you. And then the condition that was being suggested was a condition that prior to issuance of the building permit for the garage structure, the applicant shall process a major amendment to define the elevation screening on the garage or to gain approval for the elevation screening on the garage. I liked the way you said it before, which was we'll file a major amendment with an improved facade. And I was going to say for a more contextually appropriate feel.
Acceptable by the, approved by the city commission.
Any comments by, I don't know if anybody else wants to comment?
It's really at this board's discretion.
Okay. City Attorney, would I make that condition at the end of the staff recommended motion? Is that the appropriate place to make that?
Do you have a list of conditions that you had for the board, Joanie? Is it just, you know, it says approve with conditions. Are there a list of conditions that are being imposed? Yes. In the resolution, in the staff report.
So, you would say then including the conditions contained within the staff report?
No, in the resolution. Within the resolution.
It's in, yeah, within the resolution. I just called it an ordinance. I apologize for that, but within the resolution. And then you need to add an additional condition?
Okay.
I amend condition fifteen.
In a what?
I amend condition fifteen for the date, the twenty-five instead of twenty-six. That was read into the record by Linda. Yeah, but that's already in the record.
It's already in there though, isn't it?
If you wanted to, you'd add it at the end of the first sentence before the second, if you wanted to.
Can you pull up that slide that has that?
Sure.
So, we're changing it from twenty twenty-six to August one, twenty twenty-five?
Correct. It would be changed to August first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. So, that correction needs to be made in the motion as well?
Correct.
City Attorney, you just had a look. I was just checking.
I think that as presented, we internally could make that change because you've presented that that's a change in the ordinance between, or the, in the resolution before it was considered for you this evening. So, you can make it part of your motion or we can make the change based on the error.
Condition fifteen as presented.
Yes.
The change to condition fifteen as presented. Okay. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number seventy-four dash twenty-five for a major amendment to the Palm Beach Atlantic University Community Service Plan Development to increase the maximum student enrollment cap to five thousand students, amend the master plan to raise the maximum building height to three hundred feet north of Acacia Road and to provide the construction of the dormitory building and the parking garage structure to be located between Wallingford Place and South Dixie Highway and between Gruber Place and Acacia Road with the, within the boundaries of the plan development. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations. Additionally, that this includes the change to condition fifteen as presented. Additionally, that within the resolution, we are adding a condition that prior to the issuance of the building permit for the garage structure, that the applicant will file a major amendment with an improved facade for a more contextually appropriate wrap moved by the city commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
I hope, I don't know which y'all pass, but you know. Good luck with that.
Hey, we got four attorneys up here.
I have no idea what you just passed. Okay.
And one who plays one on TV.
All right. And we'll now turn to comments from the public. If you, if you're, if you're walking out, could you please walk out quietly, please? Eric Saldivar?
For the record, my name is Eric Saldivar, twenty-two, twenty-one North Australian Avenue. Please pardon my appearance. I was not expecting to be here tonight. I'm here concerned about the homeless problem in our city. I live in the city, I run in the city, I go out in the city, I park my truck in the city, and that's a service which, by the way, I'm very thankful the city provides because you can see I'm a, you know, contractor. I'm going to be frank with you. The homeless problem is disgusting. It's not something that I want to see on my way to work, on my way home. It's not something that I want to see... It's not something I want to see on a date night. It's not something I want to see on my runs. It's a problem that's not going to go away, I understand that. But if I feel this way, I'm sure the people that live in the areas or the people that patronize the businesses where the homeless congregate aren't happy about it either. It sounds harsh, I know. I was raised in extreme poverty, I get it. I'm grateful for the life I've built for myself and that's why I think we can't continue to allow stuff like this to happen. I've called the mayor's office several times, I've left voicemails that went unreturned. The areas that I'm speaking of in particular are outside of Gettysmaren Hospital, at the bus stops, the benches and the sidewalks surrounding it. Also Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard in that area and 15th Street. Pardon me, that general area. So I, I had to call the cops one night because I was unsure if a man sleeping on the sidewalk was conscious directly across Good Sam. He built a mini cardboard house, house, and the city took weeks to take that down. One night, my girlfriend followed me to drop off my truck where we keep it and a homeless man at the corner of Dixie and 15th began aggressively yelling at her, standing directly in front of her window for money, saying he didn't want to go downtown to Panhandle. I had to step out of my truck to intervene. Is that safe? The Commission approved property at 1400 Henrietta Avenue to be affordable housing. That's in that general area. So the public is aware, there was a homicide a couple blocks away on that same road two weeks ago. That's one of the areas I'm speaking about. Is that fair to future residents of this city to live in a neighborhood like that? And to be clear, I don't know that that involved homeless people. But it's still a neighborhood that attracts vagrancy and crime. These are areas, these areas that I mentioned are areas that are considered the hood. I don't know if any of you live in that area or how often you pass by. These are areas that often seem forgotten about. So it's unfair to the residents of the city to allow this to happen, as well as those who work here. And furthermore, there's nothing compassionate about allowing people to live like this. I understand most people are addicts that are homeless, they're addicts and they're severely mentally ill. I used to be a drug counselor, I, I understand that. But we can do better. The homelessness will never go away, but it doesn't mean we should just let it happen. What's better, do nothing?
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now turn to comments from members of the DAAS. We'll begin with you, President Lambert.
Thank you. I think maybe because we had to switch the date of the swearing in, we were caught off a little off guard. And what we did not discuss was the Commission committees that we usually talk about at the time that we do the swearing in. We also didn't have any new Commissioners come on board, so I don't know if, how you all feel about your committees. It might be that we're all fine status quo and we don't need to make any changes, which I'm fine with as well, but I know that because it is something we vote on, that I need to bring it up here. So I don't know.
Well, maybe you should wait till we get all the Commissioners here, right? Because Fox isn't here.
Well, I didn't want to discuss them now, I just wanted a general sense of, is that something that we should plan on discussing? Because I do recall in recent years, the city administrator helped facilitate that conversation to get a list of the boards. So I don't know if just everyone feels status quo is good and we don't need to bring it up. I'm getting one nod. Commissioner Ward, yeah, Warren, you all good? Okay, then I think we're good. Excellent. That was easy as my first official task, thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to our Police Department and the Fund for a successful Run With The Cops 5K this weekend. Mayor and Chamber of Commerce, thank you for making it the most beautiful day that we've had all year. It was a beautiful day in West Palm Beach to run a 5K. Also, the day before, Howard Park had its Easter egg hunt, which if families have not participated or do not know about this, it is probably the cutest event that the city hosts all year to see all of these kids running after these eggs and the parents just very excited for them. If you missed it, I'm excited to say that the park, which is our, our city's golf course, does have a free Easter egg hunt as well. It is this Saturday at, starts at 5:15, although I think they have events and food starting a little bit earlier. And I heard 10,000 eggs that they'll be putting out there for all ages. And then wanted to mention that Coniston Middle School is having their second annual ECO Summit and they're focused on working with our local schools on how we can provide for our children and working with the city's youth climate action grant program. I just am appreciative of these types of programs that our kids are doing and when we support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. Curry Park Community Engagement is still going on. If you didn't make the previous meetings, please join us on Thursday, April 17th, 6:00 PM at Manatee Lagoon, if not for the content, for the beautiful views. But they'll be discussing the park programming. It's not the park of itself, the design. I feel like a lot of residents have kind of been, are meetinged out and I get it, but your participation is important. And if you can't make that, the last meeting will be Thursday, May 29th, from 6 to 8 at Flagler Gallery right across from Commission Chambers. Esperanza Center is looking for volunteers. I understand that they've had issues with resources and support services and are seeking volunteers with basic to intermediate technology skills to teach in small computers classes to cover basic software, internet web serving, email drafting, miscellaneous and safety with using technology. And they also would welcome support for answering phones, welcoming visitors. So please reach out to Esperanza Center, which is a Long Pine Wood Park across from the Boys and Girls Club. The Rose, Project Uplift and Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful is hosting a cleanup at Roosevelt Elementary, which is 1220 15th Street, on April 26th from 8 to 12. And again, we are doing the Teacher Appreciation Week business recruitment. If you are a business located within West Palm Beach and want to support our teachers, please reach out to our Commission Office. We are shooting for obviously Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5th to May 9th, by having local West Palm Beach businesses partner with the city to provide discounted services and goods. And I will be giving shout outs to all the businesses who sign up. The first one was Day By Day on Northwood Road. You can get great discounts there as a, as a teacher, you just have to show your badge. And I believe that that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this time to congratulate Commissioner Paduzzi on his reelection. I know that you were not here with us two weeks ago, but I do believe that the DAAS is better with you on it. So congratulations, sir, to you on your reelection. And I'd like to thank everyone that comes down. I know that it's not always convenient or easy to participate in civic engagement, but thank you for participating, for tuning in, for joining us. Your presence and your participation matter. Local, and local government works best when people are engaged. When we listen, we learn and we lead together. So thank you for taking part in the process. Stay involved, stay informed and continue to voice your opinion and know that it really is important and makes a huge difference in outcomes.
Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Warren, for the congratulatory words. I appreciate that. And congratulations to you on your reelection unopposed. I wasn't, as you know, able to be here for the swearing in ceremony. I wouldn't have missed it really for anything except for the fact that I was pretty sick and I only regained my sense of taste and smell like three or four days ago. So I didn't want to pass that along to you. Congratulations to Commissioner Lambert on being appointed or elected by this body to serve as the President of the Commission. I certainly would have liked to have been here to have voted for you also, but you know that you, you have my support. And to Commissioner Ward, just want to thank you for doing a great job as Commission President and, and maybe it'll come back around eventually. It's going to be a few years probably before you have a chance to do it again, but I look forward to seeing you in that capacity at some time in the future. And, you know, to all my colleagues on the DAAS, you guys really do make this job easier to do because I know that I'm doing it with people who really do care about the city, even though we may not always see eye to eye. I think we can understand that we all want what is best for the city and I thank you for that.
Okay, yes, congratulations, Commissioner Paduzzi, for your reelection without opposition. Couple of announcements. I was a panelist at this year's 2025 Smart City Expo in New York. In that capacity, I had the opportunity to share the story of West Palm Beach together. Our great city embraces a style that prioritizes local problem solving, public-private collaboration and strategic investments in the city's future. Through our focus on public safety, affordable workforce housing, empowering our philanthropic sector and creating an entrepreneurial culture, West Palm Beach is putting power in the hands of those who best understand our challenges, local leaders, businesses and civic institutions. This allows us to drive real results quickly and effectively. The panel discussion with Stephen Ross, CEO of Related Ross, and Artie Tandon, CEO of Smart City Expo USA, provided great insight into our city and I was proud to represent West Palm Beach on a global stage. You know, embracing innovation and investing in scientific and technological advances in our city is a top priority. So as our city proudly joins a global movement to recognize the transformative power of quantum science and its role in shaping the futures of our cities, industries and communities, let us acknowledge and celebrate World Quantum Day. Y'all can clap for that, okay, never mind. Quantum technologies are rapidly moving from research labs into real-world applications, transforming everything from communications and infrastructure to security and healthcare. Last week, I sat down with leadership from the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County and Quantum Coast Capital to discuss the city of West Palm Beach as a part of the emerging quantum coast. As we look forward to continued collaboration with our regional partners in preparation for the future of technology and opportunity, our city remains committed to staying informed, engaged and ready to support innovation that benefits our residents and economy. As West Palm Beach continues to evolve as a hub for innovation and transformative growth, it's important to remember that our core strength is rooted in community. Every week, residents gather in West Palm Beach in our downtown area for entertainment, leisure and philanthropic events like the Run With The Cops Annual Police Fund 5K that took place yesterday morning, as President Lambert alluded to. And I too want to thank the Police Fund, our sponsors, donors and all the participants who ran and walked with our police officers. Don't know if you know it, but the average runner takes just under 5,000 steps to complete a 5K. And every step taken yesterday morning was in support of our first responders in blue. Thank you again to our West Palm Beach Police Fund, which was created to serve and protect those who ensure that West Palm Beach remains a safe, vibrant and world-class city that provides a community of opportunity for all. A few upcoming events on Saturday, May 3rd. Get ready to rewind the clock and experience the magic of the 80s and 90s at Vintage Vibes in partnership with the West Palm Beach Downtown Development Authority and Powered By Love, the Palm Beaches. We're bringing five hours of nostalgia-fueled fun packed with live music, arcade games, roller skating, vintage cars and more along the waterfront from 4 to 9:00 PM. And that's on Saturday, March 3rd, Vintage Vibes. You can- May 3rd, May 3rd. Yes, thank you for that correction. You were listening to me. I don't know if y'all, I don't know if y'all listen to me or not, so I just talked. Anyway, you can also enjoy even more entertainment at the 561 Music Festival at the West Palm Beach Amphitheater from 11 to 10:00 PM on that same day, May 3rd. All of it's free. So that concludes my remarks for tonight. Thank you, God bless you, God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, all. Now you can clap, yeah, yeah, yeah. World Quantum Day, that's-